And great pride and satisfaction in the fact that we've been able to expand student support programs. While creating many opportunities for educators. In part, it's because of the growth and improvements that we have been able. To implement over the years that this particular downturn feels so terrible. I also recognize that while we are not increasing class sizes with these staffing. With increasing class sizes, these staffing and program reductions. We with these staffing and program reductions, we are removing services for students and staff. Now, before I turn it over to CFO Cooper to walk us through the numbers. I do want to note that even during this enrollment and economic decline for the ISD. I remain optimistic about our future. We will recover from this downturn and I believe our enrollment will come back over time. Especially as we transition towards a more normal school day, school week and school year. So at this time now, I am going to ask our CFO, Mr. Jake Cooper. To go through the budget documents and there's a lot here, I know. So we'll. You know, if the board has clarifying questions or anything, we're certainly here at your disposal. So. Mr. Cooper, if you want to go ahead and kick this off.
Thank you, Superintendent Theley. President Weaver, members of the board, good evening. I do appreciate the opportunity for a special meeting, even though the. Content matter is one that we'd rather not speak about. I'd much rather have a balanced budget before you, but this, as we go through our. Spring budgetary processes, this is a central component as we have a May fifteenth. Deadline looming before us where we have to notify. Certified staff members that are continued employment. So before you this evening is other three, two documents of importance. One is the. The board blurb, in this case, it'll be the rationale for our program reductions. It's rather detailed. In length, Superintendent and I, you know that to you in advance that you were able to look at that. And for the community members, now the full version is available online. We had an annotated version. Out of respect for our employees and of course, the board is they were just going to see this for the first time in public this evening. So there's a full version. Which will be going through. Right now at this moment. So. If you ever thought, if I ever thought in my seventeen year career that. We were the fastest growing school district in the state for many, many years and I would be standing before you, doing a reduction in force. Based on a precipitous enrollment decline due to the COVID pandemic. That's something I could not foresee. Superintendent Theley noted, he and I, along with a few board members, conducted a reduction in forces about ten years ago during the Great Recession. And of course, that was foreseeable as the global economy was in basic free up prefall. And our state revenue forecast month after month or quarter after quarter demonstrated the need to. Lower budgets and lay off staff members. This is driven, of course, by an outside force, something that we've never seen before. However. As you all know, and you've heard me many times at this diaz say that. We are funded via student revenue and student populations and on a per head basis. And when that declines. The district has little or no choice but to right size its organization or will not be able to maintain its financial solvency. Well, this evening I'll take you through the rationale and basis needed for program reductions that are going to occur mostly in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. We have and at your approval took midyear reductions of. One point six million or so on classified staff. However, at this point in time, we'll need to make reductions significantly larger than that. Of importance, if you could scroll down a bit, Stephen. Oh, no, sorry, just the enroll. Let's let's touch on enrollment just a little bit. So the first paragraph, you could Stephen. There we go. Enrollment, of course, the lifeblood of our system. We had twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty four students on the annual average the year prior to the pandemic. That excludes running start. So with running start, we were looking at. Just around twenty one thousand and change on the headcount. And this current year, we are at nineteen thousand, oh fifty four as our annual average FTE of our last enrollment count. As you can see, that's a reduction of nearly twelve hundred students or one thousand, one hundred eighty FTE year over year. Additionally, I am projecting further declines, which I think is both prudent. And also is driven by what I'm seeing in early enrollment numbers, in particular. Our kindergarten numbers remain anemic. By anemic, I mean between two and two hundred and fifty below where they should be this time of year. So the canary in the coal mine often for enrollment for the future year is how kindergarten numbers are going to look. Now, I will hopefully, and I will also. You know, ride on some of the superintendent's optimism that. We could see bounce back in enrollment. And this is something we discussed in our boundary committee work. However. That is really going to depend upon the modality that we have in the fall. If we're back in person, and this is my personal opinion. And what happens to and what will happen to students that have chosen alternative. Options for education. Are they going to remain there? Or are they going to come back to their public school? And I think a lot of that is still unknown. Which places us in the situation we are in today. So two year decline of about eight point one percent in enrollment. So a significant chunk of revenue. Also this evening, as Superintendent talked about later in this presentation. We will be per the IEA negotiated agreement notifying IEA on what position on the seniority list will guarantee their employment for the future year. So that will come shortly. So if you could scroll down, Stephen, that'd be great. So as you can see, the administration tonight is proposing twenty two million dollars in reduction for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Predominantly driven by our precipitous enrollment decline. I also am going to touch. Quite a few times this evening on fund balance and equity reserves, and I'll use those. Terms interchangeably. Because when you are doing a reduction in force, of course. That is the one place where folks often will question your methodology is how much money you have in the bank. And so. As your CFO, there has never been a perfect amount of money in the bank. My financial organization, professional organizations like DFOA. Want sixteen percent or two months of operating. Our labor unions, of course, would like us to run with one or two or three percent. They love, of course, they like the lower fund balance. Superintendent and I over the years, with our work with our rating agencies and standard ports of moody's. You know, they like to see a fifteen, but normally we run between a ten and twelve percent fund balance. And of course, we were building our fund balance in anticipation of opening four new schools. Of which we will be opening two next year. So. As you can see, I'll tell a little bit of story about the fund balance beginning this year, forty two point three million dollars of equity in the bank. I'm projecting the ending reserves to be twenty seven million dollars. It's a thirty six percent. Decline in our fund balance reserves. They also declined the prior year by four or five million dollars. So we are using our reserves. That is what they're for. They're used to be spent once and one time only, similar to what you have in your savings account at home. So in your savings account at home, you either draw it down or you build it up. There's one. Those are only really two options. And so. We have been drawing down our savings account heavily this year. To move through the pandemic. And of course, whether the dramatic decline in enrollment. So let's scroll down just to touch. Yeah, let's look at that full graph. So. For those of you who don't know in the community and the public, the board is well aware, superintendent and I. Have a requirement by the board to have a three to seven percent unreserved fund balance. So. The money in the bank for description purposes, our equity. Is broken into two different categories for the most part, reserved, which means. It's going to be spent or planned to be spent on something and unreserved, which means it's basically unfettered cash. The district uses on a month to month basis to smooth out our cash flows. Or for instances like this. What's before you in the detail graph shows that if we have an ending fund balance on eight thirty one, twenty one, which is the end of this fiscal year, twenty seven million. And we retain. For example, that reserve for prepaid inventories, which is almost two percent of your fund balance reservation. That's an accounting requirement. So we have no, we have no leeway there. And then even if we pull out, as you note, on this one, we pulled, we had nine million dollars in reserve for future school facilities. We pulled out the reserve amounts. For the two opening buildings that are no longer reflected there. And if we end at twenty seven million and everything falls into place, we will meet the board's. Minimum parameters by about four hundred thousand dollars. Now, put that in perspective, we have an operating budget of just under three, just over three hundred and forty six million. So. Point one or our ten, ten basis points would be three hundred and forty six thousand. So. It doesn't take much for margin of error to get us not compliance with the board's fund balance reservation. So that's over a one year cycle.
I think what Mr. Cooper is saying, this is the pushing us as close to the edge as we could. Possibly allow ourselves to get. And I do need to note, while I appreciate CFO Cooper. Owning a share of the requirement for the three to seven percent unreserved. I recognize that is my responsibility, not his. So thank you for that, Jake. But. So this is, you can see, we've gone quite aggressive here. As I've told CFO Cooper. We are in a worldwide pandemic. This is why, and I appreciate his good fiscal stewardship of the district for these many years. That we had this money to address this issue at the time that it came. But I would argue now is a time to spend down your fund balance. But and as you can see, that is our, what we're proposing here. But I do want the board to know that I understand. That I'm putting myself in jeopardy a bit here to being out of compliance. It won't take much to get me out of compliance, but. I I just, I'm aware of that and Jake and I've talked a lot about that. But this is where we ultimately landed. Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Superintendent Theley. Do you mind, Stephen, let's. Oh, that is not a good view for me. DJ Collins. Okay, there we go. So you may ask, if you have twenty seven million dollars in the bank. Why would you need to do a reduction in force for the coming year? And well, if we scroll down, we'll see why. There are major drivers yet unknown for the school district. First off. In the media and throughout the region, there's been a lot of talk about the federal bailout and what schools just call as S R funds. And there were three tranches of S R funds. One under the Trump administration, I believe, two under the Biden administration. I can't remember the split, but they're they're spread over two presidencies. The district, since those funds were pushed through the Title One allocation at the federal level, we have only or we are going to receive on a reimbursement basis about six point three million dollars. That is a far cry from most of our neighbors who receive between ten and twelve fold that. And the reason being is because it was pushed through the Title One formula and currently. And we receive about three hundred and thirty dollars a student. And then averages much higher in other larger districts. So. We are at a disadvantage when it comes to the federal bailout. And the funds that are meant to be used for COVID relief. Compared to most districts in the state, we are at the very bottom. I think North Shore may be the one that the only district that is less than us on a per student basis. And then, of course, Lake Washington and Bellevue are right in there as well. So. Our colleagues in East King County, who've had enrollment decline, also get the least amount of federal funds in this case. We talked about earlier, the other thing that has us, has me concerned for next year's budget cycle, of course. Talked about enrollment and we and the canary in the coal mine for kindergarten registration. I see no reason why enrollment. Wouldn't continue to decline slightly if we don't have a dramatic change in our modality for the fall. As as folks continue to make different choices for how they educate their children. We have no financial assurances. Regarding transportation as well. So in the state of Washington, you basically have three counts of year for transportation ridership. And each count. We actually count in the district, we're pretty pedantic. We used, we used to count every day and then we take the best count during that period. And we use that for funding. However, when you have either a very small amount or no ridership, then you miss one third of that allocation is on a rolling forward and a go forward basis. So we have missed both the fall and spring counts. And in that case, we will, as fall winter count, sorry, we may still get the spring count. But in that case, we've lost two thirds of our approximate nine million dollars for transportation. Legislatively speaking, there has been no direct fix for that shortfall, both in the, either in a supplemental budget. That ends this biennial or the future biennial budget either. And then the other thing that on a positive note. And I'll get up to the whole harmless last. Is that we have had. A bill that we helped prime and our local legislators helped us move forward. House Bill fourteen seventy six, which was the levy hold harmless, which basically we are. Funded on a per student basis for our levy collections. And as you know, we lost enrollment, which of course in turn would have us lose levy collection. Over the calendar year. So that bill is in an interesting place right now. Let's something change the last few hours. It's gone back and forth and was sent back to the. House for concurrency. They then made a change because they had a dispute on whether it should be one calendar year or two calendar years. And I believe they have not resolved that dispute yet. I've been in meetings all day, so I could be incorrect. For the one year, though, excuse me, the one calendar year, that drives three million dollars more in levy revenue to us, but it is spread over two fiscal years. The twenty two and twenty three and the twenty one and twenty two. So we get about a million and a half bump roughly in this current year. And then the big, the big enchilada for us and the wildest swing in our revenue picture, of course, is. The Senate budget provides approximately a fifteen million, a fifteen hundred dollars per student if it's combined with S R funds. And as we noted, we have about three hundred and thirty dollars per student in S R. So we'd get a little less than twelve hundred. Per student and that that equates to twenty to twenty two million, depending upon how they measure it in which year. So that is the biggest hole in the noon in our budget. The chambers have yet to agree. And the Senate and the House have two very different ways to get where they're going financially and. One is a lot more promising to us than the other. The House has their. Air quotes, big pot of money for the district like us would be an additional five days of school. They have loosened that up a bit and allowed it to be. Used for professional development, et cetera. That is still only equates to about four point two million. So it's a long way from the whole harmless number that the Senate budget has for us. Anything to add?
Yeah, one, one thing I would, I think it's important for our community to know and certainly for our, our staff, our employees to know that. Mr. Cooper, myself, some other, some other staff and certainly the school board. Have been advocating. So Jake just talked about a lot of the legislative issues that are in front of us. I want our employees and our community to know, we, we advocated. For a different distribution methodology for the S R funds directly with. Our, our state representatives and senators. These are our federal representatives and senators. Obviously. We were not successful in those efforts. As recently as yesterday, we have been in meetings with representatives down in Olympia. Sharing much of what we're talking about here with you all tonight, trying to help them understand how. Some of the impacts of some of these legislative choices might have on districts like ours. Advocating for, for our system. As Mr. Cooper noted, we were involved in the actual design of House Bill. Fourteen seventy six, the levy, some levy work. So. I just don't want people to think that we've just been passively allowing this to happen. We've been pushing back on a lot of this hard. We've been sharing information. We will continue to do so right up till sign of die or the end of the session. And I would also note that part of the awkward timing of all of this has to do with the fact that. We have to have our, we have to know and be able to prepare for a reduction in force. And have that process completely done statutorily by May fifteenth. We don't even have a state budget yet and likely won't until the twenty fourth or twenty fifth. Of April, that would not have left us enough time to execute what we needed to do. So again, I thank the board. For moving this special meeting. I know how busy you all are and and all the additional time commitments this past fourteen months has placed on you. But allowing us this time is critical so that we could do this work, we could be transparent about it. And be ready to meet our statutory requirements come May fifteenth. So that's part of what, what the timing is about here too. But most importantly, I want people to understand. We have been for the, for the entire time I've been here and will continue to be fierce advocates for this district. For legislation that benefits this district and we're doing so right now. We, I, I'm, I'm not going to lie and say that it feels. It feels really tough right now. The, our most recent meeting, I did not leave our most recent meeting with elected officials down in Olympia. Feeling very optimistic, but I haven't given up hope. And. Lastly, I just note, as Mr. Cooper said. A simple advocacy, if people are interested in what they can do, we much prefer the Senate methodology to coming to a budget. So. A simple statement to any of your elected officials might be, we like the Senate methodology much better than the House methodology. And we've, we've been transparent and told people that. So. But as you can see, huge swings for us and would have a big impact on our system.
Which is where. This legislative cycle is very similar to the great, the legislative cycles in the Great Recession, where we had chambers fifteen, twenty, twenty five million dollars apart. And so we're facing that now. So. Besides our revenue concerns. Let's talk about. Where we were at on the expenditure side. You can scroll down. Now. I don't use the word perfect storm very often, but I will in this case. And so sometimes things line up, things we've been working on for many, many years. And you know, this is the year we opened two new schools and. Who knew it would be in a pandemic? Since two thousand and fifteen. So, you know, seven or eight, six or seven years ago when the planning and now everything has coincided into one. So. What I talked about earlier was our enrollment decline, which is definitely one piece of the puzzle. We also have increased expenditures. You can't ignore that. So. Of, I want to go through quickly. So next year, what I do every budget cycle is I try to boil up for the board. And our decision makers on the cabinet side, what are the major budget factors each year? And you know, how much money do we have or don't we have? And I try to do it in the most simplistic form as possible. So. These are the major budget drivers for next fiscal year. IEA has a negotiated increase totaling seven and a half million dollars. Two percent of that is inflationary. There is. Three percent above that. Our other groups, labor groups have just under three million or two point nine five and negotiated increases across the system. And then I have a small amount of inflationary increase in there, which not too much. Reality is, you know, fuel at the pump is already up. We talked about you. In other settings about our increases, insurance, insurance premiums that are likely. So that is a rather conservative amount there. And then finally, the good and bad news is we have. Our fixed costs for our two new schools, middle school six and elementary sixteen coming on board. And those are the actual. Final fixed cost that I put together recently. Another of note, if you recall, when we adopted the budget in August. Eyes wide open, we knew that we were going to have a four million dollar budget deficit and we're already spending down. Obviously, that carries forward. We haven't solved that budget hole yet. Prior year in this case is referring to the current year. I know it's confusing, but I have to go. Any given time, we work in three different years in the finance office, audit year, current year and budget year. So that is referring to when it says prior year, that means this current fiscal year. But. So that's our eleven hundred and eighty student decline. Coupled with that too, is. Our precipitous decline in program revenue. I do want to elaborate a bit on that. So. We make above cost what it costs to run school age care and a small amount for food service. Obviously, school age care has been downsized significantly. And is not at a break even point right now. And neither is our food service program. So. Programs that used to generate some revenue or at least be break even have now started the cost of district additional funds to run. And then a budgeted decline, it's five point six million. That's just the BEA rate. So depending on how you measured it, I know there's two different numbers in there, but. Five hundred and seventy two is the October to October decline. If you're to look at that annual average number, that's four hundred and seventy because we have lost. On the average, a hundred kids since October first. So that's why you see a slight difference in there. But I am projecting October to October down another five hundred and seventy two students. And then we talked about the two thirds loss of transportation revenue. That we have to battle with that. All said and done is forty seven point eight million dollars of either. Lost revenue or increased expenditures. Not all sour grapes. We do have a small amount of state revenue coming just because their portion of models are adjusted by inflation. Slightly less, that's the implicit price deflator, which is the. The government measure for inflation, slightly different than CPI, usually between twenty and forty basis points lower. Sometimes a full percent depends upon the inflationary environment. S R, oh, there's the four point four million. That allows us. With the hold harm, I'm assuming they're going to get concurrency. They're really only arguing about one year versus two. I hope they don't get. Piffy with each other and call the whole thing off. But for the most part, that was piffy, by the way, in my mask. I'm sorry. That's four point four million. That allows us to collect our full calendar year authorization in twenty two of fifty four million dollars. So. That, that is, that's a good news figure there. And as I said. We'll get additional million and a half the following year as it, as it straddles two fiscal periods. S R funds, you heard me speak about, we got about six point three million dollars. The plan, of course, we've spent between five and seven hundred thousand on P P E and thermometers already. The remaining amount, we have talked about conceptually to expand our summer offerings for COVID learning slide and or recovery learning, however you'd like to speak about it. And then just quite honestly. We're going to use about four million dollars in that to supplant, which is allowed if it's an allowable activity. So we're basically taking two thirds of the S R money just to simply stay afloat. All said and done, that leaves us with a deficit of thirty six point six million dollars, which. Is fairly significant. Let's keep going if good. Okay, so. Steve, would you mind scrolling up before we hit the chart? Sorry, that little, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything there. I think we are okay. That's just, those words, just annotate the table above it. So. Go ahead, Stephen. Here we go. So. Before the board now, in understated statute, the board has to take action on program reductions. And a program reduction in this case has to be detailed and specific enough for you to be able to take an informed action. And so what you see before you are the categories and then the F T is denoted on the right hand side. The other agenda item following this is actually a reduction in force resolution, similar to what you passed in August, that. Is basically a belt and suspenders check. So. If we miss anything in detail on here, for example. As we reshuffle buildings, if let's say if we miss a secretarial position that may need to be laid off. After we do all the excess, then that secondary riff resolution would be allow us to be able to do that. At your, at your discretion. So superintendent, would you like, I would like to proceed with the program reductions line by line or. I am fine either way. I can, I can go through it if you'd like.
Yeah, why, why don't, why don't we? Yeah, why don't we, we move through those program reductions? But before you do that, Jake, I did just want to note something that. Unlike the previous reductions in force that, that we've had to manage through. The environment is a little different this time because of the pandemic. You know, we always try to. Preserve the classroom as much as possible. And we've been able to even accomplish that to some degree in this reduction by not increasing class sizes. So, but the challenge here is where we might have gone a little deeper in some areas such as custodial. Or para professionals or something like that, given the, the uncertainty of what, what the remainder of the year and what the fall will look like. We just felt like that was not an area that we could take the kind of deeper cuts that we have historically. So you, you don't see as much of that here in terms of like custodial and.
It was, it was a very interesting and difficult budget exercise. Partly because. When you have to put a huge emphasis on student and staff safety when it comes to cleaning and temperature checks and attestations of the superintendent. Allowed to. You can, you have to have the paras and you have to have custodians. And so it limits them where you can reduce the budget.
Exactly.
And similarly. You'll see as we go through our reductions. As we begin our right size. A lot of what we are reducing is. Programs that you all have wanted to add. For many, many years. And I know it's, it's, it's painful as we go through it, but. It was a lot of teeth gnashing and worry as we were going through this in the cabinet level.
Well, as the board knows, and as we fought so hard for our McCleary money several years ago. For our twenty eighteen and our twenty twenty levy. The, the, the heavy lift campaign that B I S did and folks did during that time. But with a positive outcome that allowed us to bring so many wonderful supports to our students and staff. That we had wanted, some of us had been talking about for, for over a decade. And so as I mentioned in my opening remarks, to now have to undo some of that work that we worked so hard to put in place makes this especially painful. And but again. And but again, we're not as big a system as we were and we have to right size and we have to be fiscally responsible because we are going to recover and we're going to need to have a system in place as we do that. So as we go through this line here, you can recall our efforts to improve and better support student mental health, better guidance counseling. Our behavioral emphasis, as the board knows, we adopted the PBSCS or what some call PBIS. And we implemented that and have implemented that really well. And we've seen some positive impacts on our discipline data as a result of that work and as a result of our equity work. And so to have to, and, and we've, you know, the way we've grown and made our CTE program more robust. I mean, so many good things that came from all of this. And to now have to take any of it away is painful, but it is, it's just our reality. So that's, yeah, this is, this is probably the hardest part of this document for me.
Absolutely. And so what you do see is nearly twenty-two million dollars in proposed program reductions. And those are savings. So if you, if you try to, that's not a salary amount for some individuals. That's salary benefits, mandatory benefits, FICA, insurance, et cetera. So first item, which is just under half of the total reduction, that is basically just enrollment driven ratio driven staffing. And it is important when we talk about staffing superintendent is that the reductions before you do not increase class size. So K three remains intact, four or five, we did not change the allocation, six, eight. We have reduced one FTE out of each of the secondary schools for that math pathway when we get to it. So there could be an incremental increase in class size, but we did not change the class size allocation model. So that's really important to know that we did prioritize the classroom. And of course, the commensurate workload that that has an effect on of our IEA members. So seventy-seven or the equivalent of seventy-seven certs for ten million. We talked about the previously executed reductions. Those are going to move forward. And what I'm signaling to you is that we're going to keep those and not restore those reductions. Building admin reductions, those are, there's four FTE there that are going to be displaced out of the system. Two FTE for middle school deans, middle school counselors. I want to talk about middle school counselors a little bit. Some of what you see like on the middle school counselors was a change in program and the fact that our middle schools, our five middle schools are lowering in student enrollment. So some of our middle schools now have up to three counselors. We've moved all of them down to two. So all six will have two because they're, they're obviously right size seems to be the word, but we have leveled their enrollment. And so there is a reduction, but that reduction, of course, is somewhat a lower service level, but also the lower enrollment in each of those buildings as well.
Similar with some of the middle school assistant and dean positions as well. And I, I think since you did talk about administration, Jake, I just, I want to remind our public, because I know we've talked about this a lot over the years, of all of the public school districts in King County, the Issaquah School District has and has for as long, at least a decade, had the lowest administrative overhead of all school districts and we continue to have that. So we start from a very low place and, and I, I know we're very fortunate and, and that we can have low administrative overhead because frankly, I think part of that is because we have wonderful students that come from amazing families and it does help us in that regard. But I, I know that that a lot of times, and it makes sense, particularly if, if you're an individual whose potentially his job is going away, you want to look at others and say, what, what's going on on this side of the ledger? But I do think it's important for people to know we continue to have and will continue to have the lowest administrative overhead in King County.
Correct. So one thing also to talk about is the Swedish mental health reduction. It's contract services. We have not yet decided on where those are going to be reduced yet. We had anticipated potentially redistributing some of that elementary mental health supports on retaining the secondary. I think that's our thought, at least of now, Superintendent.
Yeah, keep in mind that we have, I believe, thirteen FTE assigned to mental health counseling. So we're not eliminating mental health counseling. And Mr. Cooper is right. Our, our discussions right now are leaning towards targeting more of that support at the secondary level. And that is based on what our numbers would indicate, where the need is greater as well.
DJ Collins, would you please bring up the deck? As we move through the slide, some reductions in the business office. That's administrative assistant and accounts payable position. Assistant Superintendent Special Projects, that is, we're not replacing Assistant Superintendent Heckman. And she is, that position is going unfilled. PBSCS coaches that as a reduction, PBSCS coaches from full time to halftime. So one goal as we went through these reductions was to look. Assistant Superintendent Bungard and Superintendent Thily and I sat down along with Ed, who was a cabinet, and kind of looked at that safety net for each, each grade span. So if they didn't have PBSCS, did they have other interventions? Were they getting counseling coverage? So we made sure that there was a safety net of some sort at each level. However, that safety net has been thinned a bit during this procedure. So that's taking the fifteen FD currently at each elementary within the halftime. Same with our elementary counselors. We made those one point O and are now proposing a reduction of halftime for counselors. I do want to be clear that we believe that those are best taken by different individuals than having the same person. So we'll work on that on the staffing side as well. I don't know if you want to talk about that with the superintendent?
No, I, I think that, that we just learned from our previous experience that as a, as a one point O job that is half PBSCS coach and half counselor, it didn't really work very well. So we're more likely to go, if we, if we have a one, one FTE elementary counselor, would more likely become an itinerant and work between two buildings would be the methodology there. Jake's going to come down to and talk about the, the PLCs. So since I got my mic on, Jake, I think I'm just going to jump in here. This one is tough. The board knows that just a few years ago, the, one of the biggest challenges we had was recruiting and retaining enough staff to teach as we were a rapidly growing district and, and you know, we were doing, having to recruit from other states and everything. And one of the things we learned through our, our work in that area was one of the ways you retain employees is you really support them well when you hire them. And I had often felt like, well, our staff did an amazing job with our new, new hire academy each year and, and I'm so appreciative of the folks who have led that. That was basically what we were giving them and they were assigned a building mentor. And we just weren't, I felt like our, our onboarding and our ongoing support was not robust enough. And so aforementioned superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Heckman helped me in this. And we and the team, the cabinet and our ed planning, and we created our, our professional learning coaches. And you see that there, that there were seven FTE on the certificated side and a couple of FTE on the classified side. And these were people who were assigned a batch of new teachers and they stayed with them for a couple of years as they were, if they were brand new to the profession. And I've been, the, the work our PLCs have done has been incredible. Now, obviously, we are headed into a timeframe over the next couple of years where I do not anticipate hiring very many new staff at all. So it makes sense that we will probably be in a lull where we won't, we won't need that level of support. So it seems like a logical place to go. It troubles me because again, this was something that we worked on for years to create and we've only had it for a few years. It is probably something my hope is that we're going to need to bring back someday because we're going to start growing again. And but that, that is just as a reminder, because I know the board was so involved in the levy campaigns and as we've brought these things on, I just wanted to touch, I could, I could speak for hours about every one of these lines, but that, that was one that, again, you know, just like for years, the goal to make our elementary counselors full time. When we finally achieved that, that was a moment of celebration. And now, of course, it's a, it's a moment of sadness that we are undoing some of our own good work. Thanks, Jake.
And then the next two items are part of the IEA and district collective bargaining agreement. And those two items are triggered once a reduction in force is authorized by you all and/or there's significant enrollment decline. So the suspension of overload only occurs once the board authorizes reduction in force. We can reduce extended day contracts and those are additional days above and beyond. Staff members, one hundred and eighty-seven days they have now. And so that's like ten days for a TOSA, fifteen days for a dean, et cetera, as an example. And those can be changed, altered, shaved, et cetera. Roughly, that is a little less than half of what our current extended contracts are for cert staff. So but they are still a significant savings and does not impact classroom ratios. So you can see some of the thematic work we're doing throughout this document. There's also PLC coaches on the classified side as well. But at the same time, as Superintendent talked about, we don't believe we're going to be hiring very many staff, if any. And of course, the need for ongoing induction and professional development is, is limited. I alluded to this earlier, the math path staff staffing was a relic of initiative seven twenty-eight. If you recall, it gave money to lower class size in math and science, et cetera. Superintendent and I, and I think we may, we may, we put that in years ago to help with the double dose of math.
I, I think that that was actually current Olympia Superintendent Patrick Murphy and you and I, who came up with that one.
And it was meant to moderate math or science class sizes. And of course, as I said, we aren't changing our allocation formula with that. That could have an uptick slightly on math and science classrooms across the district. But it is one, one FTE for each of our eight comprehensive secondary schools. And then five at middle and three at high. And then a counseling TOSA, that's a TOS position outside the classroom, has a reduction of one FTE. CTE enhancement, that's CTE FTE, that is, sorry, there's a lot. That's career and technical education, full time equivalent funding that former Director Angles would use.
Current acting director, Lisa Neighbors.
Sorry, to sprinkle across all our secondary schools to see, let's see, are we going to start another program? Are we going to run it a bit low to let it build up some steam? And so what that does is that there was four FTE there. I just carved out one. So there's still three FTE to sprinkle across the CTE landscape.
A lot of times when a new CT class is created, you, you got to give it an opportunity to build some interest. So we, we might run a class light, which is where you would burn some of that extra FTE.
Correct. Theater managers, two, there's three theater managers, one at each of our performing arts centers. Two have already been laid off in our earlier action. However, there's one that's a certificate position. That's why all three are bundled for your action this evening or and has shown as ongoing savings. Another position that we have had in the system for quite a few years focused on our graduation rate, the high school grad specialists, those are proposed to be reduced at our three comprehensive high schools. Online building support, again, in that case, we have FTE that was assigned to each building. We've decided to centralize that support in action. In that case, we believe we can save the money and continue to do the work. Superintendent, do you want to talk a little bit about the assessment department restructures?
Yeah, and we even had breaking news on assessments just this afternoon. We, we are restructuring assessment. We felt like now in this time window was not a terrible time to do that, given the reduction in the amount of assessments from last year. And what we learned today is that we will not be doing the state standard assessments this spring. But before we cheer too much, it's the, we have not been released from the requirement by the feds to do it. They just pushed it to the fall. So we still have to do it. We're just going to do it in the fall. However, are we, as we know, and the board knows from the lack of some of that data in monitoring reports this year, we just aren't having as much work in that particular area. They've done a wonderful job and Director Hawkins in our assessment and her support staff. So again, and I want, I could see that about just about every, programs are people. And so there's people behind every one of these programs. And I just want to be clear. By and large, they've really done outstanding work for us. And it is in, this is in no way a reflection on the work that they've done. It's a simply a budget reality, a reduction reality for us. So, and I also want to note that there's going to be extra work for people as a result of these program reductions. I mean, our assessment work doesn't go away. Executive Director Malish and his team are just having to figure out how to do that work with fewer people, in essence. And that's our system, we're tightening our belt as a system. So that's one of the hard things about that. So it's not that we're not going to be having an assessment department. We're just going to have to restructure that work. And who knows, you know, when we get back to normal, and that's of course, the goal is to get back to regular schooling and then we'll, we'll, we'll see an increase in assessments and probably a need for increased staffing in that area eventually.
Thank you, Superintendent. And the last proposed reduction is a one point five FTE reduction for TLS, the TLS department for TOSAs.
So you can see, we tried to, we, we, we cut pretty deep away from the classroom. I believe that's the appropriate thing to do. But again, I don't, I'm not naive about this. For, for teachers and so forth who have become accustomed to a certain level of service, it's going to be difficult for the system to maintain that level of service in some of these areas. The hope was that the student experience would be the least impacted by what's happening here. But obviously, these, the student experience will be impacted. But you know, that's, again, these have been gut wrenching conversations. Tremendous amount of thought has gone into it. And you know, I could easily turn and advocate for every one of these cuts. But at some point, cuts have to be made.
And what is sobering, of course, is all those lists, the reduction, the hundred, nearly two hundred FTE, all said and done, or a hundred and, depends on how we calculate it actually, classified versus cert, that twenty-two million dollar reduction still has us burning about thirteen point six million dollars in equity balance, which takes us down at the end of next fiscal year. If all things remain static as of today, if we just move forward, we'd be at about thirteen million and change, which if my math is correct, with our puts and takes on next year's operating budget, we should be about three hundred and forty million. We're at three forty-six now, but we have increased expenditures and reductions both. So, you know, one percent is three point four million. So the math is pretty, pretty simple on where we're at in total. That's total fund balance. Not reserved, not unreserved, total cash or equity in the bank of thirteen million and change, which is a precipitous decline from forty-three million dollars down to thirteen, which I know the board has an expectation that we use our reserves and use them when we need to. That is as low as I am comfortable recommending you go. And even that, I'm a little bit nervous.
Yeah, that's after, that's after, that's after we got him to be comfortable through, through the process of going and creating this, this plan that's before you tonight. I think we're all a little bit out of our comfort zone, to be completely honest with you. But I think the, you know, the pandemic has made us learn to live out of our comfort zone as well.
And so that, this is a conservative, conservative plan because there are still, there's likelihood that we could get some additional revenue from the legislature. I spoke about the House a little bit. So let's just say that we get four million dollars more. That takes us to seventeen million. That's a little better place. Still not great. And of course, you know, we don't know what enrollment is going to do. So we do have another option, though. Again, if we were forced to and let's say enrollment came in below projection, we would then have to execute mid-year classified reductions to be able to retain our solvent, our solvency. Not great options, but you still have other levers to pull before you would be in, you know, bankruptcy. And I, and quite frankly, that's something that.
We're not going to allow it to happen.
I don't want to, I can't say definitively, I'm not, I'm not going to allow that, but your CFO would, I do not want to be the CFO after all these years that allows us to go insolvent. So that's not, not how Superintendent and I have operated our, our careers. So that's why we make decisions, tough decisions like this and bring forward budget reductions.
Sure. And, and again, we remain hopeful that there, that our efforts lobbying legislators in Olympia will result in something more than maybe just four million dollars coming to the system. But we have to plan for the worst, even as we hope for the best. And so this is kind of a worst-case scenario for us. And, you know, even as we began this process, we knew we had to do it that way. But I'll be honest, I had much more hope that we were going to get more support from Olympia. And like I said in my earlier remarks, I, my, I haven't lost hope, but it's certainly dimmed. Given the conversations that I've personally had with legislators and what I've heard coming out of the, of both chambers down, down in Olympia right now. So it's an unfortunate, it's an unfortunate thing. And I think it, you know, as I mentioned earlier, too, the feds did not help us. Jake mentioned there is just dramatic swings in the amount of ESAR dollars that districts are getting. And we just happen to be near the very bottom of that list as well. So, so here we are.
Would you mind scrolling down just a touch? So I, I will read a little bit. So, and then the superintendent will take over after that. So for the two thousand eighteen twenty-two negotiated contract between the School District and School Education Association, IEA, in section eight point five D, the general provisions and layoffs clause of the collective bargaining agreement, I'll read it to you in quote, "If the board anticipates a layoff of staff, the board will notify the association by the last board meeting in April, the level of seniority required a guaranteed position for the following school year based on projected revenues to be available." So what we just did is we went through those projected revenues. And I didn't want you to know about the methodology a little bit, before the superintendent announces the number, is that when you draw a reduction in force line based on seniority, you are targeting dollar amounts. And so each employee is worth a certain dollar amount, you know, their cost of their salary benefits. Now, what we have to determine when drawing that line and is how many of those employees, let's say, have endorsements in areas that are likely to be called back or returned. So for example, I'm a school psychologist. I am a very hot commodity in the labor market. Special education is not likely to be reduced, given our requirement to do maintenance of effort. Positions like that are likely to be recalled, we cannot guarantee that. So, but we call those hard to fill or likely to recall. You, maybe you're a physics teacher, as an example, or you have hard, harder, difficult endorsements. So when we went through endorsement by endorsement, Executive Director Fowler, myself, we went person by person, endorsement by endorsement, to determine if they were likely to be recalled based on their endorsements and classifications. And in that case, if you hit a few of those positions, it bumps your line higher and higher as you go, because you're not going to realize those savings on the budgetary line. So we take great care of this, again, this is the third time I've had to draw these lines. It's never very, it's, 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 it's gut-wrenching experience, really, to know that as you go to those names, you see the names on the list of who those people are and people you know. But that is the methodology that we do, is we have a dollar amount targeted. And then we skip those employees that are likely to be recalled back based on their endorsement. And then, of course, we end up with a dollar savings amount. So Superintendent, I think it's your turn.
Yeah, so obviously, this is, this is the tough part. But based on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one numerical certificated seniority list, IEA-certificated continuing and provisional staff with a seniority number of one through twelve hundred and two, again, that's one through twelve hundred and two, will be guaranteed a position for the twenty-one twenty-two school year. So if your number is twelve oh three and on, then you will not be.
You'll be provided a RIF notice by the human resources.
If you are, if you are continuing provisional staff.
To put that in perspective, because you do not, most folks do not have the seniority list before them. That is two hundred and eighty-five staff members. Our seniority list goes from one to fourteen seventy-six. Now, the math doesn't work out perfect because we have several ties in there. So if you, if you try to go to do the math and, and make it add to two eighty-five, unless you had a list, you won't be able to do that because there are ties for seniority. But trust me, there are two hundred and eighty-five employees in the bracket. We believe about ninety-six of those are in hard-to-fill or positions. So about one-third of the reduction in force, which for actual FTE reduce, we'd be about a hundred and eighty-three point three full-time equivalents on the certificated side.
And that's a number we need to be roughly in that ballpark to get the dollar amount that we need to do what we hope to do in terms of the budget.
Because it is a, is it is a dollar target and not an FTE target in some, in most cases. So I believe that includes, concludes our formal presentation and the announcement from the superintendent. And now we'll turn it over to President Weaver, and I'll follow your lead.
Okay, so I think at this point, we would take public input on this topic. And then I will go to board questions, comments, et cetera. So if you have public input, please raise the little hand on your screen. I will remind you that please state your name and school attendance area. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please keep all your comments civil, respectful, do not reference employees by names. Please remember that the board does not respond to public input, so that's sometimes not satisfying. You will give input, we will not respond. And I believe that's all the guidelines I am going to give. And right now, I see Meg Iyer. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, the screen is really far away, it's hard to read. Meg, are you there? Yes.
Hi, thank you. I'm Meg Iyer, I'm a school psychologist, so I actually got a little excited when I heard Jake mention the school psychologist. So thanks for the shout out to us. And I have students in the skyline area. I was putting together some notes while they were going over the proposed budget cuts. So I just wanted to share some of those. Being a school psychologist, I have a lot of concerns with the proposed cuts, including P B S E S coaches, counselors, Swedish mental health, and also our grad specialists. I understand that we're in a very difficult financial position. But we are going back to school and have gone back to school for the younger grades because of an emergency proclamation of the governor for children and youth mental health crisis. And so I think we need to keep that at the forefront of our mind. Quoting from Governor Inslee with his proclamation is, "Since the physical closure of schools, pediatricians are seeing a significant increase in youth with eating disorders, anxiety, mood disorders, and depression with suicidal thoughts or self-harm behaviors. And most families experience long wait times and limited access to mental health services." I myself, as a school psychologist, have seen a huge increase in the number of students with school refusal and with anxiety about now returning back to school. I heard that the hope was that the student experience will be the least impacted. Being a former classroom teacher, I fully understand that we need to keep classrooms small. But I worry greatly about students' mental health. A student who is suffering from anxiety or depression or other type of mental health is not going to be able to learn. And so we have to put that at the forefront. The fact that students have been home for over a year, it's really hard for me to hear that we're going to welcome them back with less mental health professionals there to support them. Just also kind of to throw in some things to consider is that our district is tasked by the state to put multi-tiered levels of support and interventions in place for students. Soon, I believe by twenty twenty-four, we can no longer use the discrepancy method to qualify students for special education under specific learning disability. And if we're cutting a lot of the staff who is helping put those multi-tiered systems of support together and making sure we're having interventions that we're progress monitoring before referring students to special education, it's going to be much harder to do that. And I worry about the disproportionality that we have in special education and how that may rise if we are not.
You've gone over ten minutes or over two minutes, so I do need you to wrap.
Okay, I'm sorry, and, and I realize what a difficult position is. I, I love working in the district, so I, I don't mean to be critical, I just want to look at that mental health piece of people that we're proposing.
Thank you for your input, appreciate that. Was there any other public input? I am seeing, oh, I am seeing one, Boyd Cotton. Boyd Cotton?
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, I did not plan on speaking tonight. I wasn't hoping to. I'm a little shocked at the lack of raised hands, I'm guessing more will come as I speak. Because I think a lot of us are in shock right now. And I know this was spoken about at the beginning of the meeting, and I know that other people are going to speak about this as well. But someone, I don't, I don't remember who it was, and I don't mean to call that specific person out, but someone said that the timing of tonight's meeting was, I believe the word was awkward. Let's all sit with that. Because I was just told the day before I'm about to go back into a classroom with students living through trauma, that me, myself, right here, this face, is on that list. And the word was used was awkward. And I know you mentioned that it was an unfortunate timing, but you know what, Friday, is that better? It would have been better for me, because I'm going into class tomorrow in front of the students that I haven't seen all year, that I have been bending over backward to teach as well as I could. And tomorrow is that day that we're supposed to be all excited that we're going back in person. And all day long, I've been wondering, am I safe? Not just in person with my students, but am I safe to have a job next year? And I had to find out the day before going back, that I am, because my number is one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven, that I am somewhere in that RIF list. And I hope you're all feeling something, because I'm feeling scared and I have to teach tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Val Harris.
Hello, I did send a letter, which I still stand by. I'm going to read portions of that, because I will not name names, even though they are in a positive context. I, as I said, I'm Valerie Harris. My husband, oldest son, and myself are alumni of Liberty High School, and we're raising Isawas School District. I am the parent, oh, I was afraid this was going to happen. I am the parent of two current high school juniors, still returning to school on Monday. I am also finishing my twenty-first year as an educator in a neighboring school district. So I repeat that I am not an Isawas School District teacher. I always wanted to be an Isawas School District teacher. Your, your high school orchestra program is what turned me into the person I am today and influences my children and every student that I've seen for the past twenty-one years. I have watched how teachers have the perception of being undervalued in this district. And that makes me very sad, particularly during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The fact of this moment is, the day before these teachers are going back to the classroom with so many unknowns, I feel is a total slap in the face. There are still more days in April, it could have waited till after they went back. And, I mean, you have this hot, this exhausted, stressed-out, and hard-working group of educators, and their morale is toast. And they have to deal with this the day before. It's too late now, the cat's out of the bag, you can't put it back in. But as you go forward, please consider that you have people that have, that have changed their, my kids have learned so much this year, they have had amazing teachers online. And I, I, I can't complain about that. They're up, they're up late at night, I see the skyward stamps on their grading as it comes into my email. Should be celebrating them, and now they're worrying before tomorrow. Please, as you go forward, consider ways to make your educators feel valued. It's the way you will keep, retain, attract excellence in your teachers. And I just, I wish them all very, very well, and have been very pleased with the work they've put in, so thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your input. Jamie Street.
Hello, I'm Jamie Street, teacher, parent, community member. Again, like Boyd Cotton said, I really hadn't planned on talking, I knew tonight would be heavy at heart. Knowing that I can count at least seven of my colleagues at the school we teach at are in the RIF. Amazing teachers. I heard tonight that it was mentioned that the cuts were chosen for what was best for our classroom, for the classrooms. However, when I look at the first nine to ten RIFs on the list, it directly affects our students. Furthermore, during the past six months of the board meetings that I have attended, mental health for our students has been talked about as a top priority. But the cuts that I see on the list do not demonstrate that mental health is top priority. I also think that the cuts you, the biggest cuts you are making directly impact our students. And not to also sound catty, but I've looked at what people are paid at the admin building, and it amounts to three million dollars. And I've not seen, I've seen, I think there's like two things that are taken off from the admin building. And I think you should consider that. Do, does every, does an assistant need an assistant? I don't think so. It would be better for students if we could figure out how to get rid of that. Maybe some people could take some pay cuts, I don't know. But thank you for listening, and I really hope that you reconsider some of those cuts, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kaylee Byrne.
Sorry, hi. I want to echo everything that's been said before me, I feel like the last speakers have done a really good job of explaining kind of how I'm feeling. One thing I am, I am a person, I am also a person that's going to, that is in that list. And I have spoken at many of these board meetings, I work at Iskow School. And I, I hope you recognize that I am someone who has consistently spoken at these meetings in an effort to make education equitable and equitable. I mean, honestly, that's, for me, that's, that's the dream. And a lot of, all of my colleagues that I know that are in that RIF list are the same way. And I know how hard we work, I know how hard we fight for students. And I know how much of my passion for teaching is just connecting with kids and making sure that they feel seen and heard, and like they can change the world. And I know that there's other teachers not on the RIF list that do that, but, I mean, I'm, I was not totally surprised, I guess I'm a little confused about what FTE means, because my calculation was it was going to be about a hundred and forty-four FTE, which I understand that like I make less than some of the people at the higher end. But that seems, should seem like a benefit to me. So I'm, I'm, I don't know how to process this, I don't know how I'm supposed to teach tomorrow for my first day back with this information. But, I mean, the teachers will rise like they always do, so I guess I will. But I'm, I'm angry, this is ridiculous, and I don't really know what else to say, but thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for your input. Chris iPhone, I'm not sure who that is. If you're on here as Chris iPhone?
Hello?
Yes?
Sorry, I'm mobile, does this work, or you, you need video, I believe?
We would prefer video, can you do that?
We can, if you want to see me driving around picking up my kids.
Okay, fine, that's great, thank you.
I, I, I've been.
Can you give us your name, please, I'm sorry?
Sure.
Full name?
Yeah, my name's Christopher Gregson.
Thank you.
I, I, I've been dropping in and out of the meeting. And the, the, the interesting thing I've found in the commentary from the board here is, I understand we're recognizing the pandemic, and I understand everything else. But there's, there's a really lacking observation around the actions of what we've done and how we've gotten here and why we have to lay off these teachers. I mean. I hear these teachers saying that hearing the day before they have to go back to school, they're potentially on the RIF list, these are the best, these are some of the best teachers, generally the young, eager teachers that we're gonna lose. But the actions of how we've executed this, the actions of how we've wanted to get our kids back to school are directly leading to this. I mean, I haven't heard, and I may have missed it. How do you reason that the most popular and, and, and driven economic real estate market in the entire country leads to your drop in enrollment? There's no way to reason that, and I can't believe that you can't even entertain to start talking about that. It's dishonest. And honestly, I think the numbers you have now are just a quick precursor to what's coming. And and that's it. I mean, you really need to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ashley Potter.
Hi, I'm trying to, there we go.
There you go.
I also was not planning on talking tonight. Actually, just went for a run to try to calm myself before teaching tomorrow. My name is Ashley Potter, and I teach at middle school math. And listening to this, I was absolutely shocked that we are cutting counselors and psychologists and PPSES coaches when we're welcoming back students who have been traumatized. Our training at the beginning of the year was how to help students who have been through trauma and how we should expect students to have trauma symptoms coming back. So I am worried about my students. And I am shocked to see that that's a large percentage of who is getting cut. I am also concerned seeing for my own self, seeing math on the chopping block. I was realizing that with the new middle school opening, there was going to be a lot of shuffling. And I was already thinking about that, and now I'm curious. I have 31 students in each of my sixth grade math classes, as does my, the other teacher who teaches sixth grade math. I'm expecting 19 students in multiple of my classes in person tomorrow. I'm ready, I have desks set up for 19 students in person. And I don't know what COVID is gonna ask of us next year, but that's at half the way the alphabet is split. That's, that's my half group. So I'm, I'm curious to see how cuts in the math department will not increase my numbers more than that. And I'm concerned not only for my job, but even more so for the this, the counselors and the psychologists who support the students' mental health.
Thank you. Dorana Burkholder. Dorana. There we go.
Thank you. I'm Dorana Burkholder, Issaquah Education Association President. And it's an understatement to say I'm concerned for my colleagues and my members to be here tonight as we, as the district is looking at reducing any ISD staff for next year. Any reduction in staff will bring less support to our students and ultimately bring more work on staff members who I know, I don't know if many of my, many of the staff members have it in them there. I hear from members from multiple members how much work this has been this year, how stressed the anxiety level. Members have increased in email communications, asking about what kind of leaves are available to me because I don't know if I can keep doing this anymore. Might resign. And I think if we let any staff go, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what staff, if they do get recalled, will come back. We know that going into education, there is limited number of amazing teachers and staff out there for the education and support of our students. And letting, letting staff go and reducing that brings worry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dorana. Michael Williams.
Sorry about that. Thank you. First, I just want to say that our education system is a foundation of our civilization. And without great teachers and highly motivated teachers, and without you know, the support for them, you know, and the support for our students through counselors, we really jeopardize our children's future as well as our society's future. So I really think that teachers should keep their jobs, and in this current environment, counselors should, should keep their jobs, and those people should be considered essential workers. My one question is this. If we weren't, if we did not open schools at this time period, would we have the money, you know, for next year? And, and what is the total cost of the fact that we're reopening school so late in the year where we, we can just finish remotely, and then reopen schools in, in the fall, and maybe have additional finances to cover the cost?
Okay, thank you. I do want to be respectful of time here because we have an awful lot to talk about with the board. I've got two, four, or six. Okay, I have seven people who have their hands raised now. We will take those, but I'm not going to take any more after that because we do need to move on with the discussion. So if your hand is not raised now, it's, it's not happening. Mary Segesta is next.
Wait, are you done?
Hi.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. You somehow got muted.
Hi there.
Yes.
Hi there, Mary Segesta, Issaquah High School parent, freshman parent. Thank you for the message this evening. This is not an easy message. It might be doing, this is not an easy message for anyone to hear, regardless of your position or role, whether you're a board member, a teacher, or even us parents. It's not easy for us to hear. We're losing great teachers, according to this proposal. And yes, the timing of it is, is not desirable. I totally appreciate and empathize with the timing of this, as many of our students are headed back to school tomorrow. But I have to ask, just as a businessperson, what were we expecting? We were losing families in the school district the entire year. What other outcome were we expecting if we couldn't get the school board and the union together to bring our kids back to school, when the rest of the country was? So while this is an undesirable solution, like, I, I'm perplexed why everybody is surprised by this. Counselors, yes, I think we need to really rethink that, as kids are coming back after 14 months of remote teaching. We need to have our counselors there in place and ready to support these kids. And I'm, I'm so, so, so sorry this is happening, but I can't believe that anybody is surprised with this outcome. It's a total failure on the board and on the union's behalf for not getting our kids back to school when the rest of the country has. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie D. You could give us your full name when you come on?
Yes, I don't know if you can see me here.
Cannot see you, can hear you.
Okay. I wasn't expecting to talk tonight either. I'm Julie Dietzker. I have two high school students at Issaquah High School. And I just want to say that the previous person spoke very eloquently about exactly what I wanted to say, that I'm not sure what we expected the outcome to be when so many students were leaving. It's extremely unfortunate that we're gonna lose teachers, especially young teachers. But the teachers who have been not wanting to go back this year, and the teachers' union who has stood their ground and refused to come, let our students come back in, brought this on themselves. And they should have expected this. And the leaders of that union are completely responsible for all these teachers being let go. And I want to start crying because no one seems to understand that. And it's their fault. And, you know, I am sorry. This is a very unfortunate place to be. And I hate that we're here, and I hate that we're losing great teachers and counselors, because those are the last people we should be losing. But it's infuriating to hear people blame all these other people. You blame the union. It's their fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlin Schreiber.
Hi, I have two kids in high school, Issaquah High School, or excuse me, Skyline High School. And I'm just echoing what everybody else has said. I am just so sad about the loss of our teachers. I've always felt that the best part of our district has been our teachers, and I had a senior this year in high school, and I am thinking back that, back to his kindergarten teacher at Ground Ridge, and the amazing teachers we had at Sunny Hills and Pine Lake and, and at Skyline now. I've just have loved the teachers, loved the counselors, have loved all, everything about our district. And I'm really sad about the mental health leaders and counselors that are gonna be leaving, because that is definitely what our kids really need. They really, really need that health right now. Even my boys that are excited, excited to go to school tomorrow are really nervous, really nervous. They're excited to go. It's time, but they're nervous. And I'm just echoing what everybody else is saying. This has been coming for months. Last summer, I was shocked to hear of people that were moving out of the district. And then with every month that passed, more and more people were making plans. They were pulling their kids out. I just learned of somebody today that, that decided to pull her fourth grader out. It's been happening for months, and so I've been, I've tried with other parents to try to help bring parents and families to the table to help talk to the union and talk to administration about what's going on and what could happen if we continue to have our schools closed. And if, if school had closed for the rest of the year, like someone had mentioned a few minutes ago, I think it would be much worse. I think it would really be much worse. So I'm so glad that we're coming back. And I, and I'm just, I'm sorry it's happening, but we've been seeing this for a long, long time. So it shouldn't be surprising. It's sad it's happening tonight, and we're really excited to be to school, and I just really want to wish the best of those that will be leaving, because I'm sad to see them go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaitlin. Alan, Alan Waite? Yes?
Hi there. My name is Alan Waite, and I'm a counselor at Issaquah High School. This is only my second year in the district, and I'm number 1409 on the seniority list, which will mean that I'll be receiving a RIF. And I come with some experience of working at Seattle Children's Hospital and King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. And, you know, if I end up not, not working at Issaquah next year, you know, I will be heartbroken. Not, not necessarily because of, of me and the loss of my job, but just for the community and for the students. Right now, our counselors at Issaquah High School, and I think around the district, we're at a ratio of about one counselor every four, 450 students. With this change, that'll put us up around one counselor every 500 students. The National Organization for School Counselors recommends 1 to 250 students, so Issaquah will be about double what we should be. This year, I've seen a huge increase in students in crisis. I've seen students struggling with motivation, with depression, with anxiety, at levels that that are way too high. And so my heart breaks for, for the students that are going to be impacted by, by the loss of services for them. Thank you for everyone who is working on these decisions. I know it's not easy. But ultimately, I think we need to keep our students in mind, as they will be the ones impacted most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nate Pereira.
Thank you. I just want to echo on what's been said in terms of, I guess my greatest shock is that people are shocked by this. And like has been mentioned, we've been watching this build for months. We knew this was happening. We knew this was happening back in October and November and December, when parents have been clamoring to the district, to the union, to everybody to get our kids back in school. And we started watching families leave one at a time, one by one. And it didn't just happen last night. Now, to have the president of our teachers' union come on here tonight and make comments with very thinly veiled threats that she's not sure if teachers are gonna come back, if they're laid off, or maybe they're gonna take their leave. This is why we're here. This is the, the attitude that got us to where we are. We, the rest of the country, the parts of our state had been back in school for months since the beginning of this year. And, and for some reason, we're in King County, and we're this special bubble that just can't do it. Now, by my account, we had a district, and we had a board who set dates for us to return multiple times, only to be sued by the teachers' union. We had them set additional dates to have us back by March 29th, and negotiations dragged on and on and on. The union had the power to make this happen a long time ago. And now to be here and to be angry and making threats about teachers leaving or taking their leave, come on. You had the control. You had the ability to get this done a long time ago. So this is a complete failure in leadership, and if teachers want to be angry, look at your own leadership and your own organization and be frustrated. This could have been taken care of a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Holly Stipe.
Hi, this is Holly Stipe. I am an eighth grade English Language Arts teacher at Issaquah Middle School. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. I'm also the parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler. And listening to this tonight, of course, is heart wrenching. I have the privilege of living and working in the community in which I serve. And the thing that bothers me the most is people shaking their fingers at the union and blaming the union exclusively for what has happened is unfair and unfounded. It takes two to tango. We know in any marriage, there are two parts to any story. And so I believe that it's unfair to be thinking about it that way. I just wanted to just address that. The bottom line is that this pandemic has created so many things out of our control, right? We have all had to get very comfortable with being uncomfortable in the past year, doing things that we never even thought of. And my colleagues very bravely have spoken this evening, putting their faces out there, when they know that tomorrow, they need to put on a brave face for their students, to welcome them, making them feel safe in this environment. And yet, this evening, the timing, that while you justify it with your needs, really shows a lack of EQ. And so I implore you, please, get creative in your thinking. Please, get creative in how that you want to solve this problem. Because the numbers that I see really show me that, that the board does not value the mental health of not only our students, but our employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last input I'm taking is KB, so I need you to give us your name, please.
Oh, can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so hi, I'm Cara Bean. I am a language arts teacher at Issaquah High School, and I also have students in elementary, middle, and high school here in the district. And I think I was a little surprised in the presentation not to see numbers about RIFs. I think most of us knew that was coming. I think the number of RIFs was very surprising to people. I was surprised, you know, having, having been a teacher during the Great Recession, and so having kind of been around the block for, for RIFs previously in, in the district that I used to teach in. Luckily, I was not RIFed then, and it doesn't look like I'm on the number now, having been around for a little bit longer. Luckily, I was not riffed then, and it doesn't look like I'm on the number now, having been around for a little bit longer. But I was surprised that I didn't hear any presentation of any any anticipated retirements being included in the number of FTE reduction or any other natural attrition. So I would be surprised that we wouldn't hear any, like historically, we typically lose about this many FTE, or we have this many people retire, or we have already had this many people say that they're going to be retiring at the end of this year. And having that number be included as part of the FTE. And so I was just very surprised about that because I think that that also increases the level of anxiety for a number of of my colleagues and for my and honestly, for my my kids' teachers, like I know that there are some teachers that my kids have that are on that riff list. And I'm not going to be able to to help comfort my kids because I'm going to be my my own children. I'll be back in the classroom tomorrow and comforting the kids who are showing up for me. And I just wanted to say too, that, you know, there is there is blame for for our entire community. We we have not handled this as a community. We have handled this as individuals and done what's best for us individually as individual families. And of my four children, one of them has really, really struggled this year. I did not pull my kid because honestly, it was not the fault of the school. It is the fault of the pandemic, making clear actually some learning disabilities that my kid has that we just found out today diagnosed through seeing a private neuropsychologist. And so that brought it out. And so this is for us all to come together and share in the responsibility and for how we move forward and not to be pointing fingers at anyone else or getting angry. How are we going to solve this? And let's move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. I do want to apologize again for the timing of the meeting. As I said, the meeting was scheduled before we knew when school was starting. The school start dates bumped a couple of times. All that being said, I do appreciate how very difficult this is for people, and I do want to apologize for that. There is nothing easy about a discussion of a reduction in force for the people discussing it, and certainly not for the people on the receiving end. And and we do understand that. Having said that, I am going to open it to board questions or comments at this point. And actually, since the board is thinking, I am going to start with a clarifying question for CFO Cooper. You talked about on the the item of middle school counselors, you said that we were right sizing the schools, so we're right sizing two counselors for each middle school. Am I correct in assuming we are starting up a sixth middle school, which will have counselors and an assistant principal? Are those people in the money that's already in the reserve for the startup of new schools?
Correct.
That is correct. Okay, because it seemed like that number should actually be going up, but it's just another bucket.
I do want to clarify that on the counseling support side, that every building will continue to have some sort of counseling support. We are reducing counseling support. We are not eliminating it. So high school counselors, I believe, we did not have any reductions planned at the high school level. We had middle school and elementary counselors planned, so I do want to go on the record that we did hear some testimony about the elimination of council support. No, we are reducing council support because we just recently doubled our investment in that area. And so now that is where we were reducing.
Yeah. And and I have to say, I totally feel the pain of the people who gave public input. We worked so hard two levees ago with counselors, PBSES, teacher mentors, and of course, the grad specialists. It it tears my heart to see that support. I know it's not leaving, but it's going to be less than it was. And and that's really difficult. Harlan.
I just, I guess, before I even ask detailed questions, I I guess I need to know what the boundaries are of this conversation. Meaning what was presented tonight is that, hey, here's what we're doing. Thank you. Or is that, is there anything up for discussion?
I mean, this is our
I really let Ron answer.
Well, I was just gonna say, this is our our best plan. I mean, if obviously, if the board doesn't accept this plan, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. I would remind the board, however, we do have a clock ticking because we do have to make notifications of any reductions enforced by May fifteen. But that doesn't mean we can wait until May fourteenth to do that. There's, we have, there are statutory requirements as to how that those letters have to be delivered. They have to be created. So the the clock is ticking. But to your basic question, Director Gallinger, this was, this is the collective work of myself and my team. It's, and I would remind people, if not these cuts, then what cuts? And that's so. So the short answer is if the board doesn't accept this plan, then we need to come back with another plan.
And I just want to quickly say, and that's why we are having this meeting and didn't wait till our last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we we asked for this additional time. I want to be clear. We we even had previously proposed, I think, even earlier dates, but but it also, it's a lot of work to do what you saw presented tonight. There was a lot of discussion and and literally work in terms of having work with the seniority list and things like that, too.
And it is an interesting question, given that.
I guess on that, so we can actually have a, so this is actually a time I could provide input that isn't just a meaningless dialogue amongst the board. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because I've never gone through this before. So I have certainly have a lot of strong opinions based on this. But I will keep them to myself if nothing I say is going to intervene or change anything.
Well, I I think that what gets interesting, Dr. Gallinger, is the governance structure that you operate under is that the superintendent controls the means and the budget is definitely a means conversation. And so if you did propose something different, I don't know how that's not a an interesting place for you and your governance structure to be. Historically, you do not make any changes to our recommendations for program reduction. Nor do you have you made any changes to our proposed budgets, because those historically are in the superintendent's side of the house. However, this is a unique situation.
And it lives in a statutorily strange place because the board has to take action on program and service reductions and has to adopt a budget. So even while we are a policy governance, and I agree with Mr. Cooper that it's the means, there is a role that the board has to play in this.
Well, and we didn't put together, you know, we put together a budget parameters. We didn't put together a riff parameter for you.
Right.
I don't know that we don't have any.
I mean, I would say there is a motion in front of the board.
Yes.
So to the extent that you have very strong feelings about priorities in this proposal, I think it's fair to share those. At some point, we have to vote on this. And so I I think it's important for the board to have the discussion. But but we do have to balance that with the the policy governance means parameters. But but I do take Marnie's point that we didn't give you, right, you have budget parameters, you don't really have riff parameters. So other than, I I would argue that the budget parameters kind of apply to the rift. But
I think
I think we can have the conversation.
Okay, I mean, regardless of policy governance, I mean, budget clearly fits within our purview. So I I just wanted to establish what the boundaries were before I even have a conversation. So.
And I just, if I could add to President Weaver, we know that this was going to be what this conversation was going to be tonight. I want to be very clear about that. I didn't anticipate that I was going to hear from staff or anything, oh, yeah, this is perfect. You've nailed it. You've got it just right. This is all a matter of an opinion. This was, this was our our work, our best, our best thinking around how we can pull twenty two million dollars out of this organization. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not tone deaf to to the counselors and to the governor's proclamation, emergency proclamation about mental health. I would argue that I think the best thing we can do for our students' mental health and social emotional health is get them back in school. I think part of what's driving the big need is the fact that they haven't been able to be in school. That's my, that's my opinion on that. So I would have been, I would be shocked, Director Gallinger, if people didn't have differing opinions than my own and Mr. Cooper's, than anybody on my staff, than some of from we've heard from the public. This is, there's no good answers here. So, you know, I'm more than comfortable hearing people's input. We've, we've actually historically done surveys on our budget, going way back in this system, long before just about any of, other than myself and a few of us were here. And I will tell you, the the challenge is depending on who you are and where you sit in the organization, will go a long way towards determining what you think should be the best cuts.
We have, it's very hard for as a CFO to glean any actionable data from a budget survey. Historically, we we have what's called the pinwheel of death around here, which basically shows post-strike, there is a survey that equally divides all the interests basically between, what, eight and twelve percent? And so actionable information, that's why historically we have taken taken up the mantle as as senior leadership and proposing reductions to you, instead of doing a like a forced matrix or a y'all come and battle it out kind of situation, which other school districts have done, and pit the swimmers against the drama, drama club. It's another point, too, as you notice, we did not cut any activities or sports because we know how important those are to kids. And we didn't actually say that during our presentation.
Well, yeah, given, given the currency.
Pay for those, let's be clear.
The levy pays for about four million dollars worth of sports and activities a year.
And then families pay as well, so.
But, but, yeah, so I'm gonna just listen now.
So I I don't know this is hard anyway you slice it. Don't get me wrong. I think that if we have prioritized so much effort over the past five or six years that I've been here, at least, to what looks to me like to gut our social emotional learning and approach, and if that's something that we've been passionate about, this board in particular, this doesn't represent my values, nor do I think that it represents the board's values. I'm not speaking for the board. I'll be interested to see what the board says. I would have appreciated a more balanced approach, meaning to tolerate bigger class sizes K three, and able to to continue to have the elementary supports that we most desperately need for all of these families coming back post pandemic. And so when I see seven point five FTE of elementary counselors cut, and I see mental health counselors, which I know is going to come out of elementary schools, cut, I I have a hard time with that. I don't see assistant principals at elementary cut. So if we're asking our teaching staff to do more with less, I I I need to see it also. We're asking our administrators of the buildings to do more with less. I know part of we are by saying like we're cutting your support staff. So I know in essence, we're doing that. But I have a hard time being able to accept a document that shows, like this is our value statement. And I think for me, this shows that we are not valuing the social emotional learning and supports that we've so worked so hard for and fought so hard for. And the community has supported time and again. So I I think that we're doing a disservice, not only to the work that we've done, but more importantly, to the families that we're going to need to support and going to want to support. And so I think that this could have had a much more balanced approach. And I would rather us have bigger class sizes. And yes, it's tipper tat. So, yeah, you're going potentially deeper into your whatever number line that you have. I don't understand that part, and I don't, that's not for me to understand. But I think that having the ability to support kids is if I have to choose between supporting all kids versus having a little bit bigger class sizes K three, I'm willing to tolerate bigger classes. And I think that I can, good faith, can get up in front of the community and say, hey, you know what, for these next couple of years, I'm sorry about your class sizes in kindergarten through third grade are going to be a bit bigger. But that's so we can continue to do these things to support your kids.
Jake, can you, can you remind me on the K three class size?
Yeah, and I and I don't
the enhanced funding, I I just wanted to make sure.
And I went through the, I went through that exercise intellectually, Harlan. And so two things that I ran up against. One is the loss of funding in K three. If we escalated class size, we wouldn't be able to get the funding. And then secondarily, I worried about COVID capacity, not knowing what the, if we increase class sizes, what does that do if we're still in some type of restricted modality for the pandemic? And so those two things, I I you normally that my increase in class size is my go to, right? It's one of the first things to do. It kind of spreads the reduction across the system in different ways. But operationally, I couldn't get there based on my concern for, you know, is a couple, two or three more kids going to push us over the limit on the, on if there's still such a thing as COVID capacity? And then what would the revenue hit be on K three? So I did think about that, but that's where my mind was that so at least on on lower grade levels and class size.
Yeah, but is the funding based on an average or is it based on what you have? Meaning, if you push one class in a building to overload and kept all the the rest to meet their mark, do you get credit for the four, the four cohorts that are at the right size? And then not credit for the one that isn't?
Average.
And what if that was where you had four, they were in person, and one that was remote, and the remote was larger? Is that also average? Would that be different?
Well, we don't know next year if remote is going to be allowed, right? So we don't even know if remote school days will be counted, right? Unless the State Board of Ed gives us a waiver on what counts as a learning day. So.
Well, and we heard today that we may not get word on that until July. We pushed back hard on that, saying you can't tell us in July whether or not we're going to have to continue to offer remote options or not. Superintendent's pushed back on that.
Right, because a big part of this is what will school look like in the fall?
And and I want to be clear, I'm, I, my goal is for school to look as close to the way it looked prior to the pandemic as we can possibly get there. I actually don't disagree with some of the input that I heard tonight, that part of this may in fact be a bit of a self inflicted wound. I've been advocating to get our kids back in. And I have to believe that the learning modality is one of the drivers behind our declining enrollment. I I hope my staff and everybody shares that belief with me that we need to, obviously, we need to follow all the mitigations and protocols. We, we do not want to create virus spread in our community. But the reality is not being able to serve our kids in person, I think, has been a big part of the problems we have. And I want to be clear, too, when kids arrive tomorrow, the staff that we have will be, I mean, that we have, this staff doesn't go away after tonight. This, this, these cuts are for next year. So, yeah, I I it seemed to sound like maybe kids were going to arrive in buildings tomorrow with less counselors. That's, that's not, that's not the reality here. Going forward, that would be the case. I would also note that if you look at where our staffing counselor and emotional, our PBSES and all that support is today, it's some of the most robust of any school district. So we are bringing it down to levels that I I wish we didn't have to, and I I don't disagree with Director Gallinger. This is a value statement. And I'm struggling mightily mightily with it. The reason we have the counseling ratios and everything we have today is because of the work of this board, my staff, and this community to make it happen. So I I I struggle a bit with it, too. But as Mr. Cooper said, when you look back at what we've done previously, we did raise class sizes. We, and and the other thing that's happened, too, is the enrollment declines have not happened equally across the system.
Nine percent in elementary.
We've been much harder hit at the elementary level than we were at the secondary level. So some of our elementary classes, our schools are going to be relatively close to the size that they were before. Some of our elementary schools are down. So there's just a lot of variables at play here.
And we struggle with it, Doc. I mean, truthfully, that's why you see a reduction and not an elimination. Because they were one point O positions and we moved them to half. And I, and you know, so.
And we'd love to be able to build these programs back because, as I said in my opening statement, I believe we were just starting to feel some of the positive and see some of the positive results of the work that we were doing. And and I can point to the discipline work as one of them.
So I guess I feel like we're just not being clear on what are the assumptions for modality of delivery, particularly in elementary in the fall? So we've kind of talked about in what we'd like to see, what we propose to see. But this is based on, this is based on an assumption. My my hope is that that assumption is that this is classrooms sitting fully in person, and we're not running both remote and in person, which has caused us to go up in teachers in elementary this year. So is part of this, is that the base assumption that it's full in person? Second, is part of this Second, is part of this reduction bringing us back down to a level prior to having to increase for the double remote and in person? Particularly K3, I'm asking.
Yeah. Oh, you have thoughts on, on?
The last part of your question threw me for a loop, Sydney, I'm sorry.
So for K3, when we went back, one of the things we had to do was add staff.
We added a half dozen teachers or so.
So I assume part of this is, is taking that down to, well, that's my question. Are we assuming that it's fully in person, therefore, at least in that section, we don't need those extra people?
Correct. I, I have built the staffing plans for next year based on a full in-person model.
Okay.
And, and, and I thank you, Jake. What I guess what I would want to say to that Director Mullings is that is absolutely what I, what I hope for and what I have tasked staff to work towards. Of course, there is still some uncertainty as it relates to, to the virus and, and what will happen. But yes, we are going to continue to advocate for a full reopen to normal in the fall. I think that is critical. I, I think that the sooner we could confirm that, the better for, for our future enrollment.
No, I get that. I just want to make sure, what is the model? The model is built on the assumption that it's full in person?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Because those half dozen teachers we hired mid-year were unbudgeted.
Yeah, and, and, and not continuing contracts.
Continuing contracts.
Right, so they basically.
They're basically stuff.
Our fund balance in a sense.
That is exactly.
Yeah, you're not on the seniority list.
Not on this list at all.
No.
Okay, and then if I could just build on that, I guess what is, I, I understand that we're saying we're more heavily hit at elementary for the reduction in, in students. But we're doing the list based on seniority, which I would imagine is not tied to whether they're at elementary versus secondary. So how does that work practically?
The way it works practically is that we have enough in the RIF bracket to compensate whether they're in elementary or secondary. Quite honestly, I also look at their endorsements as we go as well. So they have a K, some, some people have a super cert. There's a few of those around where they.
Not, not many of those left anymore, you got to be old.
Most are K8s, right, or K6s. And so we look at the certification, Sydney, to make sure how they balance. And that's the same way on the counseling side, we know as well, there's, there's a certain amount of counselors below the RIF line that will receive layoff notices. Now, what is tricky too is, and I wanted to also correct the record, Executive Director Fowler and I did account for those above the line that are retiring and leaving. And of, of course, that changes our number one direction or the other.
We just didn't talk about that.
We did not talk about that.
And frankly, I don't like to speculate about possible retirements and things like that, but it does play into our internal work.
We account for retirements that are 100%. We received a letter, a notice, et cetera. They've been authorized to leave. Now, leaves are interesting too, because we owe that position. If we've granted them a year-long leave, they're going to return. And so it is a rather large puzzle, Sydney. And what we do is often is we open that RIF bracket up wide enough so we actually have enough, I'll see, positions to be able to restaff.
I, I think that may explain some of the comments you heard from some staff tonight, Director Mullings, about that, that they knew this was coming, but they were shocked by the size of the number. But again, I, I would remind folks that while the number is 285 or something, we do anticipate because of what you were just describing, Sydney, that about 100 approximately of these are going to come back. But in order to hit a number, we have to go well beyond that number. Because it's possible you could have a situation where a senior counselor or somebody with that status that, that is above, above the line is endorsed and could have to change from being a middle school counselor to a high school counselor. You know, because the seniority list is a, a, a big factor in how this works.
Yeah, and we should be clear for the community's sake that how you execute a RIF is very well-defined in our collective bargaining agreement with the IEA, correct?
Yes.
And state statute.
And state statute.
The last in, first out is a state statute.
Right, so the thought of, well, gosh, you lose some of your young energetic teachers. We don't want to do that any more than anybody else does, but that's, those are the rules we have to play by.
This is the, there are times, and most of the time when I'm at the podium, where business intersects education. And this is how unfortunately, this is a legal direction and maneuver that is agreed upon by the parties. And so a reduction in force is historically seniority-based. And we've had, we had a former lawyer on our, our board, Mr. Brian Deagle, finally opined one day from the dais that he understands why people can get frustrated that it's always the younger teachers who lose their jobs. But as an attorney, he completely understands that it's the best legal route to take. Because you're not being arbitrary and capricious, you're not picking favorites. You're going by a well-known factor that has been agreed upon for, between the parties for the longest the contract's been in place.
And, and we do know how painful this is. And we do know especially, we're, we're going to riff a certain number of teachers and then turn around almost immediately and recall a whole bunch of them. And it doesn't feel good to get jerked around like that either. So I, I am very sympathetic to this, I wish we could do it differently. We are playing by the rules. Anne?
So you mentioned program revenue, where we have programs like the before and after-school care and food service that usually bring in some revenue, but then a minimum usually don't cost us money. But yet you're saying that is the case now. So what is the way forward to either right-size those or make them definitely break even or back to where they were, which was revenue-producing?
My, my simple answer would be get school back to in-person and normal the way it was. Because when we were in that modality, we had an incredibly robust before and after-school and, and impact programs, something that I'm super proud of as superintendent. And it, it's loved by our community. And but in, with our wonky schedules, first fully remote and then some grades in and half-days, we've only been able to provide childcare in the elementary. And, and a lot of families are home, so no need to obviously pay the money to put your, so I would anticipate Director Moore, that when we get back to normal, we will grow our BASS program back up to what it was. And I know that Nathan Weineger, who runs that program for us, he is always eager to grow that, yeah.
Right, because that's a program that as we have more fam, as we go hopefully back to normal and we have families re-enroll in the BASS program, we expand it to meet.
Absolutely.
And it, with hopes we can, you know, obviously lower social distancing, you know, lower the staff requirement for supervision because that, that's a huge driver of cost.
That's a good point. The program is also, even the one that we run now is much more expensive to operate because of the, the numbers of the physical distancing and things like that, that we have to do as well. And I want to be clear too, while that program does generate revenue and doesn't lose money for the district, a, a chunk of that revenue that it generates, we use back to scholarship for low-income students into the program as well. We're not in the business of trying to just make money. We, we want to deliver services, but we're now in a situation where a program that has historically made us money, allowed us to provide scholarships is now costing us money.
And the same basic premise follows for food service. We need to increase the meal volume. Executive Director Turney and Director Olson are ready to make that program break even as soon as we open the doors.
Soon as the kids are there buying pizza.
Then I have one other, and that had to do with, or probably more, but the next one I would have is about the high school grad specialist. So you said as far as counselors, you weren't eliminating or reducing counselors at the high school level.
Correct.
So the effect there really is about the high school grad specialist.
Yes, and, and it is not lost on my mind that our last two years have been the highest on-time grad rates that we've seen maybe ever in our district. Again, it is not because they haven't done a great job and shown their value. I think the data speaks for itself in that regard. It's simply you, it, it's an opportunity cost. If I don't go take it here, I got to take it somewhere else.
And we did retain the, when we added grad specialists, we also added a six-and-a-half-hour pair position for in-school suspensions. So we have retained that to make sure that kids are in school and not out of school. So that is, that is retained, that was kind of our, when we launched that program, they were part and parcel together and that is still retained.
Yeah.
So Jake, you talked about the fact that this is a worst-case scenario. We're drawing a line that says, you know, if your number is here or less, you will be offered a contract that guarantees you employment for the following year. And if you're above that number, we cannot guarantee your employment. However, because we are working on a worst-case scenario, which we have to do, and I totally get that, can you describe a little bit what happens if, say, over the summer, everyone gets vaccinated, COVID just gets beaten to a pulp and our enrollment goes up 800 kids? Then, then what's the process that you would follow?
Well, we should, and, and I think Executive Director Fowler, I told her she would get an opportunity to speak this year.
Yeah.
And we were remiss not to talk about, usually we talk about riff and recall in the same breath.
Because there, there is a possible upside to this. And I don't want people to feel this is my number, I'm doomed. I, I mean, there are possible upsides.
This is, this is where I, this is where I caution my folks though about.
I know.
We got to be very careful how we talk about it, but you're absolutely correct.
But I do want the community to understand what the process is that we go through. That's really what I'm getting at.
For example, if we have increases in revenue that I'm not demonstrating tonight in this brief presentation. So legislature finishes, maybe Senate and House settle on a thousand bucks a kid. Okay, so we have 12, 12 or 13 million dollars. Then we go back to Dr. Gallager's values conversation about, and, and Dr. Gallager, I do want to let you know that what you raised were the toughest decisions for us. And one of the most, if we were to have revenue, those, some of the places we were like, we would likely to start. I'm not saying we're going to start there, but we would, we would think about those in restoration issues. So we, we, we're not far apart intellectually and it was a difficult decision, but we had to focus outside the classroom. So, uh, Director Fowler, you want to talk about recall?
Sure. Executive Director of Human Resources, Natalie Fowler. So recall comes after some other processes. So the first is the, we are going to be doing transfers for, I want to call it Elementary 16, but I remember Cedar Trails and Cougar Mountain Middle School. And we will be doing those first. Then we, this is all contractually, the order that we need to do, our staffing for next year. Next then would be accessing. And since we do have so many changes in our boundary, we are anticipating that accessing might be more than maybe in a typical year. But we also usually haven't done a boundary when we've been doing, when we have done a RIF as well. So how that's all going to shake out will be interesting.
So tell us exactly what you mean by accessing. Yeah, because that's, that's, right, I'm not sure we.
Those are HR words. Okay, so the accessing is when Jake gives his staffing allocations to a building. You look and see, are there any, like I'm taking, I'm going to take an elementary for example. So in each grade level, K through five, he would allocate, based on obviously student enrollment, how many sections each grade level would get the next year. So currently, you might have a kindergarten with three sections. Next year is projected at two. But then you might have a bubble in a grade level, so they roll up. They were four sections as second graders, but then they become three sections because you can have larger class. So it, it just kind of shifts, right? So then a lot of times you just are able to shuffle staff in, a lot of times they request to maybe change grade levels. You're able to kind of absorb that through changes in building assignment and natural attrition that sometimes happens with people either retiring or, yeah. But then every once in a while, you then have a building that overall they are in excess of a teacher. It means that teacher literally has no place to go in that building. Well, we owe that person a contract, so then we need to find them a landing spot somewhere in our district. So that's the accessing process. So even though we are exercising a RIF, we might have still accessing to do based on the staffing allocations and the boundary change that is impacting some buildings more than others. So that has to happen in alignment with the CBA, that happens first. Well, it happens second after the volunteers for Cedar Trails and, I got to get used to it, Cougar Mountain. So we access, and then after accessing comes volun, I mean, comes transfers. So every, every certificated staff member above the RIF line has the opportunity to put in for transfers for any position that is open. So then we go through those. And then we also in that part do any what's called district-initiated transfers, which contractually we can use up to six of those. Those are ones that we have the discretion to say, you know, Director Mullings, we're going to put you now from this school to this school. And then the last piece would be what do we have still open? And then that is where the recall list would come into play. That help a little bit there, at least gets you to the recall part? All right, so then the recall, the first part we would do is recall positions requiring special endorsements or licenses, and I think Jake spoke to that earlier about special education is, is a big one. School psychs is another one that, in fact, we looked when we were doing our preliminary kind of staffing to look to see, most people who have that credential are using it. They are in, they are in that, that role. You don't see a lot of people have that credential who aren't using it or in the classroom or something like that. Your SLPs, your counselors, CTE, that's another one that you have to have a special endorsement to do. And then sometimes also hard-to-fill positions, say world language and other positions such as that. Those are first then going to be part of our recall and those are on seniority. And then the last would be, not last, but the next would be recall of all other positions by assignment of the most senior-qualified member. So we just start, start kind of going through the process. So we have an opening here, we need to pull them back. There's a whole process as well, I don't know how in-depth you, I'm prepared to speak about it. But I'm also, if you don't want me to go too deep, that's fine. It's, there's a whole process of what that looks like in the collective bargaining agreement of how, how a staff member is notified of a position that they're being recalled, how many, how many days they have to respond? What happens if I call you and say, you know, you are being recalled to teach X at X school and you want to say, no, thank you? What happens then, what your options are, are or are not? The other thing to also know is that employees stay on the RIF line for up to two calendar years. I mean, cal, um, school years, sorry. August 31st, the two years from August 31st of the year, the RIF notice was given.
Right, because one of my questions would be that process you just described, what's the timeline for it?
Well, I've never done one.
At least an estimate of the timeline.
Um, honestly, I, I, you know, I have been told by some administrators who were here back in 2009 that it is a lengthy process.
Yeah.
And it's a lengthy, but it also, it's, it, there's so many variables. It depends on how many positions you actually even have available to recall. If you have a, a lot, then it is going to take longer. But I have been told that sometimes it does take into the summer. And worst case, I, I think I've heard stories of September, October, especially if we, I think, I always forget, CFO Cooper was talking about that if all of a sudden we see this huge enrollment in the fall that we, is just completely unexpected, we're going to have to go hire, hire, not hire, recall our teachers.
That, that's what I, I was going to share, because I have sadly been down this road before. It is a process that will likely play out a, well, let me say this. I hope it plays out all through the summer, because if it does, it means we're recalling people. So again, this is our worst-case scenario. If we, let's just be optimistic for a minute and say we do get another 15 million dollars out of the budget. Well, obviously, that's going to allow us to bring a lot of this back. And in doing so, it's going to create a mountain of work for our HR department, work that we would love to have to do. Because it means that we got more money and we're able to start rebuilding the system, of course, the way that we want to. It is not unusual, Director Moore, or used to not, it, we've been very fortunate. It is not unusual, Director Moore, or used to not, it, we've been very fortunate for a long time. We've had growth in this district. We've had excellent fiscal management. And so we have not, in my tenure as superintendent, done to our principals what was frequently done to me, which is, I continued to hire staff well into the fall typically. Because we were very, very tight on our staffing back in those days. And so it would play out like this. I would get staffing for Issaquah Middle School based on having 875 students. And I would say to then CFO Dean Mack, Dean, I've got 950. And he'd say, well, but school hasn't started yet. They've registered. Well, when you see the whites of their eyes, Ron, you, you tell me. I remember once I got a additional dean at 950, and I was at 949, and I was told, there's a line, you're going to be on one side or the other. This time, you happen to be on the wrong side. And so staffing deep into the year like that was not uncommon then. I hated it. It's a practice that I, I, I'm glad that we haven't had to do. But I would do it gladly if it meant that I was bringing teachers back or counselors back because my enrollment was going back up. So I hope we have a ton of work over the course of the summer and into the fall, restaffing this system. But it's going to take, obviously, a significant amount of revenue if we're going to be able to do that.
Right, because you'll start now just to right size what we do have and the positions you have to fill now. And then there would be continual, if we continue to have more students come back into the district.
Absolutely. Students equal revenue. As more students come in, more revenue comes in. You, I mean, that, that's the thing. We, we talk about, yes, this is a representative reduction in support staff. It's also a reduction in students. So there's few students for them to see as well. So there is a part of this that is right, right sizing.
I just, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about this because we are talking about executing a RIF on a financially worst case scenario. And, and we have to do that. That's the fiscally responsible thing to do. Jake joked a little bit about not wanting to be the CFO that takes us into bankruptcy. But, you know, we don't want to be the board that does it either. And we have a lot of financial executive limitations to make sure that doesn't happen. So it's really important that if we're guaranteeing contracts, we do it on the absolute worst financial case. But I think all of us are hoping that that's not what actually happens. So I do, I mean, I don't want to give anyone false hope, but at the same time, I won't, don't want anyone deep in the depths of despair because a lot of these jobs could come back. And I just, I wanted us to talk a little bit about how that would work. So.
I guess I want to follow up on that, and I guess I'm concerned that I don't think that this necessarily reflects worst case scenario.
Okay.
And when I see the FTE of what has been calculated, I specifically, two months ago, asked for us to actually ask all of our families to essentially pre-register for next year. Because I think that you're shooting too high. I think 18,400 students is not realistic. Because I think, to your point, yes, you saw elementary response this year. You're going to see that continued. And then you're, now you're going to add a secondary one on top of it. So I don't think that we're a worst case scenario. Anywhere close to it. I think that you need data to actually show us proof that you really can deliver 18,400. Over the past three, four years, we've been off by our enrollment targets all but one of the past three or four years. And so I, I, I think that this is not realistic. And I don't think this is worst case scenario, actually.
To, to that point, I had a question about that because you based it off of the, and the 1,100, a reduction of about 1,100 students this year. But when I look at the P233 that Lisa White sent out this week, we were at 1,300 loss. So what, how does that number translate into a difference? Because that, to me, I, that was the one thing that popped out. It's like, well, we just got that on yesterday, and it, I totaled it up. So we're at 1,300, and I agree, I think, you know, right now, we're sitting at 722 reduction of what we projected in elementary, 290 less than what we projected sixth through eighth, and 317 less than we thought, projected for high school. And I think those numbers are just going to increase across the board.
And they are because we don't, we haven't provided any, any competence to anyone that's in this district on, are we going to provide in-person learning to their children next August 31st? I, as a parent in this district, don't have that confidence myself. And so I don't blame families for looking for other options. And I don't think that we're taking them seriously. And I think that they've spoken on order of 10% this year. I, I think that we need to look more seriously about what our number is. So while I absolutely am against the SEL cuts that have been brought to us, I think overall, in general, I think that the FTE count is too high. Because what Director Mullings' point is, is, you know, we need to be telling the community what to expect next year. Until we can do that, I think they're going to be walking, voting with their feet.
Um, a few things on, on that. Superintendent and I planned to survey secondary families between now and May. And we potentially go back to four days a week, depending upon caseload. So Dr. Gallager, and I'd not forgotten your request. We were trying to figure out when we would queue it up. Because the reality is, even if I ask families, it doesn't mean I'm going to get an answer from every single one. So I would still have incomplete data. Even in August, I have movement, and that's tied to their student schedule. But we do agree that we, we need to take a temperature check, particularly at secondary. And that is going to be part of our, a survey that we're working on to solidify our secondary enrollment demand. Assuming we go to four days a week. Right now, we have enough capacity, based on the two-day-a-week model, to basically serve whoever wants to be there at any given time. But we're going to have to have much more finite numbers as we get closer to our COVID capacity at secondary. On the numbers, Marnie, I think you have to look at them. There's a few different ways you can look at those. If you, I look at it on the annual average FTE. So we are, I'm projecting 572, 572 kids down from 10-1, but 470 kids down from our current annual average FTE. So that's how, there, there is a, since we are funded on the annual average, that's, that's the number I was using in my calculation. So we have had decline, enrollment decline throughout the year. We were actually up this month by a few kids.
Yeah. Which it was interesting. I wondered if that tied to more kids coming back.
And I agree, Dr. Gallager, there's, there's no enrollment models that are made for a pandemic and a bifurcated or hybrid education model. And I have those wonderings myself on how, because when you do a reduction in force like this, you're also updating the system, as we've seen tonight. And the question always is, how, how deep do you go to ensure that you're going to be able to continue your solvency? And this is a bit of a gut check for myself and the superintendent on where we can go. I will say that if enrollment does come in lighter, then we will be forced, if we do not do deeper certificated reductions, to lay off more classified staff mid-year, which we can do. So we do have some safety valves. But you are correct, the last, I had a very good streak on enrollment for many, many years with the pandemic. And then we had a very interesting, three years ago, we had a very interesting migration south, southbound for enrollment, at least out of East King County. So enrollment and demographics right now are fairly, I won't say, they're tricky, right? There's, there's, if you can, if you could nail enrollment right now, well, good luck. My colleagues are all trying the same thing. And one thing that I think about often is, have, how, have we seen the full decline? I don't know. I don't know what private school capacity is left. I know there's wait lists in a lot of places. I believe we're going to be back full-time in the fall, but that's my personal belief. I can't, again, school districts in the region have not announced, that far as I know, and nobody's announced their fall return plans 100% with surety. I could be wrong on that.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think that there's a lot of unknowns that we need from the state still. But yes, I mean, our, our plan is to come back in, in full return because we believe, for some of the reasons I think some on the board have already mentioned, that the COVID rates are going to be down because of all the efforts to get vaccinated and the, the efforts that people are making. So I, I did want to add too, and it's not due to any lack of trust in my team or anything. I had an opportunity to hear a presentation from a large demographics firm that does a lot of enrollment projections for school districts all around our region. And there was really nothing different when, what I heard in their analysis than what I'm being told by my own team. I will say that the, their takeaway was, just as we have kind of talked about here tonight, the number one thing that is driving the reduction in enrollment is the lack of in-person learn. That was the takeaway from, and, and so to me, the logic, I, I believe people like this, love this community. They want their children in the school system. They're frustrated, they're frustrated with me, frankly. And, and they're frustrated that, that they can't have their children in more. And some of them are voting with their feet, if you will. But I still, I still believe that if we can get to a place where we can affirmatively say, no, given on, on everything that we know, next year is going to be a five-day-a-week, normal-looking year. Maybe the only thing is, you'll, kids might wear masks or something like that. I believe that will help our enrollment. So, boy, Harlan, we, we've gone back and forth on these numbers. And we do, as Jake is right, we are going to do another temperature check at the secondary, but that is imperfect data for us as well. I don't know, this was, but you can certainly question the number that we came up with. I, I understand.
And I guess how are you going to get, how do we know we're going to get there? Meaning, as I have mentioned before, if we're at four half-days-a-week right now for elementary, there is a lot of hill to climb to get to five normal days on August 31st. So do we have a plan to transition to full days this year? Do we have a plan to do things to demonstrate competence to our community that we're really going to hit that August 31st goal? Because if, if we're done bargaining and we're not going to have any plan to get to full days at our elementary level, I don't think any family should have confidence that we're going to actually be going five days a week on August 31st. So I guess that's part of my calculation in this, is, is there any?
We're not done bargaining.
Yeah, well, there's not a set plan, but I want you to know, even during this meeting, I've received information about questions that I have been asking my team about how do we get back? Here's the one issue that I got information on, serving lunch at elementary. Who's doing it? How are they doing it? How can we do it? So it is a daily conversation that I'm having with my team about, okay, we know where we're at today, how do we get to that next phase? We've talked about, and I had a conversation with an elementary principal earlier this week about, do we want it piloted in a school? We've talked about that in this, amongst this body. Everything is on the table in that regard. Now, I will tell you that a lot of the resistance that, as I understand it, you know, we, we just had a big, big discussion over three foot versus six foot that really drug us down at the bargaining table for quite a while. We were adamant that we have to have the flexibility to move towards normal, and that means moving from six foot to three foot and doing what we need to do to be able to run a nor, as normal as possible of a school day. So while I can't say that I have a plan today that I could roll out to my community to say, this is how I can reassure you that the fall is going to look normal. That is absolutely what we're, we're talking about, planning for, gathering data on. I know that there are districts in our region, not so many in our county, but in our region, that are moving towards a, a full five-day-a-week schedule. And just as we use some of those districts to help guide us as we now begin tomorrow, hallelujah, bringing secondary students back. We'll continue to learn from those districts as they have that experience as well.
Superintendent, Executive Director Fowler reminded me too, as, as we have renegotiated LRC2, they will be back full-time four days a week, beginning next,
Yeah.
next week. So we started with LRC2, bringing them in first. We've circled back to them, Dr. Gallager, and now they're going to be full-time four days a week. And then, of course, we'd like to build upon that as we move forward through the system, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Sydney had a question, and then Anne.
Mine, as usual, is maybe more comment than question. So, um, for me, the conversation breaks into three pieces, this conversation tonight. One is around, you know, do we believe that a, a reduction is required at this, at this dollar amount is one. The second is around the set of unknowns that we're operating under and what we, what we will and will not make, believe to be true as we plan forward. And then the third is, I think, Harlan, to your point, is about our belief system on which are the right cuts to make that, to make the dollar amount. And so I think that for me, I'm, I am back in that second point, which is about the unknowns. And one is what we've just been talking about, which is the, the confidence or the likelihood to return in the fall. And I think we, we're continuing to talk about that in a way that is maybe too abstract. And the opportunity is just to be a lot more direct in our intention and what specifically would bar us from full-time school in the fall. And right now, we're, I understand that we have to work through a very specific, you know, set of opportunities and challenges and negotiations to get there. But what I would like for us to do is at least be very clear that, you know, our public plan and statement is, it's full-time school, five days in the fall, barring a certain amount of things, mandate by governor, I don't know, additional health crisis or something. And I think without taking that step, we stay in this weird spot about what, what people's confidence in. So I don't know how or in which way the form is to make that a clear statement. I think, at least it was my intent with that planning document to, to do that, but that's kind of buried the lead, right? We haven't been out front with, with what comes next. So that's, I guess, for me, a really important one. I'd like to figure out, how do we memorialize very clearly our intentions barring some catastrophic, you know, continued pandemic or direction by governor?
Right, and that, if I can join in with you on that one part, because that's what I was going to ask about. What is it that we need from the governor of the state that would allow us to be able to say, we can open school as normal, five days a week, full day? What is it that's keeping us from being able to say that?
Well, I, I can think of a few things. First of all, the whole, this, obviously, with a six-foot physical distancing, but as you know, they've already reduced that down to three feet, which makes it, doesn't completely make it clear the deck for us. Also, in that, that three, current three-foot calculation, there's still a six-foot between staff and students. And so there's a few wonkiness in there. But maybe if we could get rid of a lot of the physical distancing requirements, that would clearly help us. The governor did take some action over this past week to lessen the, the ability of an employee to claim high risk and, and take leave. We, we need to go back to what the rules were prior to the executive orders in that, in that area. We need, we, I, I think we need clarity on, are we going to be required to provide some kind of a remote option? And I, my hope would be personally, no. Because I believe, and, and I, and I, I will just tell you right now, there are superintendents and other people who don't agree with my position there. My feeling about that is that, one, there are remote options that have always been available through WABA and Spokane Virtual and things like that. But more importantly, it, it sends a message that there's still something wrong if we're not saying, school is an in-person thing. That's what we do in a regular public school.
On that point, though, isn't that, isn't that our decision on whether we're providing a remote option?
Not necessarily. Because right now, you are, a family is required to have an option. And so we need that to not be that way. Again, and there are some districts that are like, no, no, I don't want that to go away. We like being able to offer that. But that's just, in, in my opinion, I would like the remote world to go back to the way it was prior to the pandemic.
I think, I think operationally speaking, Director Moore, three feet of distance with your students basically gets you to full class size 30, 31 in, in, for desks in most standard 900 square foot classrooms. So, you know, K, K8, you're, you're, you're pretty good on a traditional classroom. You'd have some hotspots potentially in music and PE. But for the most part, at three feet, you can fit a full load in there, traditional full load. I think one thing that we're worried about now is trying to keep six- I think one thing that we're worried about now is trying to keep six foot at lunch. And that, that's really difficult when you have hundreds of kids you need to eat, so.
Yeah, you could be stringing lunch out over most of your day. It's the attendance laws that was just pointed out to me, that's part of where the issue is related to. Because right now, under the attendance law, if you are fully remote, we get to. Count you, which I'm I'm really glad that that's the case, or this budget situation would look way bleaker, but going forward. I mean.
Or if we went back to normal.
Yeah.
That option never would have counted.
Yeah, we wouldn't have been able to count for.
Attendance being in school.
Yeah.
So, but but I guess in the in the realm of. My thinking, which is directionally correct, I understand we're getting to a lot of operational specifics. But I I think direct in the directionally correct, I would, I would like for us to figure out what is our way to communicate. From our standpoint in providing education for a classical school, there's here's what we believe school looks like in the fall, barring.
Yep.
Constraints that are required of us by some governmental agency. My, I'm saying that, and maybe that's not sufficient, but I do think in the un the unknown section. That's the area that we have the most ability to to be clear in our intent. And I don't want to lose that in where we can act. Given all of the other unknowns of what may be in in legislation or or other places. So I do think it's important that we we're very clearly and publicly on record of our intent, our intent for the fall.
I I totally agree with that, you know, whether it's like we've done on every other instance now, the board has taken action. So does the board need to take some type of action stating our anticipation is to have? Full five day a week in-person learning beginning August thirty first. Unless otherwise dictated by the state or federal government.
Some other government entity.
And I think.
Included something to say that we will delay the start of the school year if our district and I A can't come to an agreement for in-person learning. That follows all the recommended public health guidance. Because I don't want to be held up in that way anymore.
Well, I I want to be clear that we are currently functioning under MOUs that will expire at the end of this school year. And I would just revert back to our, we still have a year left under our current collective bargaining agreement. Which would put them, which would get us back to in school normally. We wouldn't have to have all this other stuff.
Well, but the reality is, we know we're going to have impact bargaining. I mean, even just over masks alone.
Yeah, well, that's a fair point.
So I I would love for that too, but I don't think that's realistic.
I I did want to note, though, I completely concur with you, Director Mullings, that. And I made notes here, and we've been talking about, how can we? I mean, you hear me say what I want, but how can we as a as a district message that? And I I really do appreciate that 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 concept of this is what our plan is, this is what we're going to do, unless somebody won't let us do it. It made me think, Director Maraldo, to the question you asked me fourteen months ago. So the governor's taken us out, what's going to get us back in? If I'd have said to you fourteen months of, I'm sorry, hell of going through this and all of this. Before we were going to bring a child back, even two days a week. I don't know, we made a thought differently about about the decision we made then, but of course, none of it, well, we didn't have a choice. And none of us could have predicted where this was going to go when we were told, oh, we're going to take a three week pause in education until April twenty fourth.
So I know we're, we're all on the same page on this point, but to Marnie's point. Would it add strength to the statement that you put out if the board made a motion or a statement or something to that same effect?
So I I think when the board speaks with their with a calm and unified voice like that, it always adds, it adds to it.
Right, I mean, it could be a resolution like we've done in the past. In other cases, our stated intention to have school be back full time, five days a week. Barring a few caveats of which are controlled by the governor and the state.
I I think it's one of the board know that Superintendent and I are in a hundred percent alignment on that, it's just about timing. We need to get this work done.
Right.
Then move to eliminate and then clearly communicate plans for the fall.
Well, but they're tied together.
They're tied together.
Because people, people knowing what our plan is, at least our greatest intent for the fall drives people either to our schools or away from our schools.
Right, and we've gotten a lot of criticism from people that we haven't yet said what the fall looks like. Because because of our concerns about the unknowns, but maybe we should should shift that from. We can't guarantee it to this is what we want. These are the only things that we think could make it not happen. I really like the way Sidney framed that. Now, that's a conversation, we've still got a different motion on the table.
And I haven't started with my question.
No, and so I don't want to get carried away, but but I think it's a really good point. But yes, if you have questions on the motion that's on the table, this would be a good time.
Before we leave this topic, though, what I heard from the board is that you would like staff to draft you a draft resolution.
Would we like that?
I think so for our next meeting.
I don't know what you had on the agenda, sorry, Superintendent.
Oh, no, like, well, we just did agenda planning before the meeting tonight, and we can always add things on to the agenda.
I think that would be really important for us to be able to.
Because I do agree they're linked.
On that kind of a resolution to make our stake in the ground.
I do agree they're linked, Director Moore, I just knew that this meeting was going to be a single topic. And obviously, we're in approaching hour three and we haven't reached conclusion yet, so. We we are in alignment, it was just about cadence, I believe.
So we will be bringing a resolution for the board's consideration forward at the next meeting. Thank you for that.
Okay, so Marnie, did you have questions about the the reduction enforced, did you say?
Yes, I still had questions.
Okay, Anne, I'm sorry, did did you get your question addressed? Okay. Okay, just want to make sure I wasn't skipping anybody, so yes, Marnie.
Mine were very much more detailed, so I had one question. So the legislature is looking at a fourteen cent over the next two or three years gas increase? So was that calculated when you were doing, because it's, it's going to pass, I can't imagine it's not going to. So was that calculated in your increased cost, sorry, how does that impact? Especially as we do more transportation, fewer kids on buses? So more bus routes types things?
Yeah, we, I did build some escalation, where I'm just now starting the non-employee cost portion of the budget. But Executive Director, Attorney and I have built some escalation to fuel prices, both for increased mileage. And then, as you've all seen, the pump prices are up, so yes, we we've added some additional capacity there.
Okay, and kind of around another, the legislature is also talking about the unemployment insurance payments that we have to make and that there might be a large increase. So are those as as far as, since you're looking at worst case, are you looking at what those are worst case, what does that look like for us?
Are you referring to the long-term care?
No, I'm talking about unemployment because so many, because when, when you have a state that has pulled so much. Unemployment and given a billion dollars to someplace else on top of it. They're having to increase the overall unemployment insurance payments that. Employees employers have to make on behalf of their employees, and so I was wondering if that was, if we know what those look like now? And if that's anticipated.
We are self-insured for unemployment. And even in good times and bad, we continue to contribute to that pool, so we have healthy reserves that are able to handle our current draw. And our rates are still very reasonable and have an increase because we we didn't get hit. I mean, our employees were part of that whole employment securities issue at the state level. But our funds that were paid in that we distribute based on our unemployment pool were untouched. So we weren't part of that fraudulent activity. So to your point, we we have sufficient reserves, given our current unemployment, because we we will have people if. They're not called back, or we had bus drivers for load collecting unemployment. And then we're also continually continually collecting from employees every month to keep that safe and secure. So we, I believe we have sufficient reserves and our rates right now have remained steady because we continue to contribute.
Okay, and I, and then my next one was about the long-term care. Does that begin this coming, I mean, is that now or is that start in two thousand twenty-two, so at the beginning, January?
Long-term care is a increase in employee deduction, so there is no cost to the employer. It is, it's a deduction to from the employee.
Okay.
So thankfully, that starts January of twenty-two, but that does not have an effect on our budget.
Okay, and I'm sorry, my questions will bounce all over because I thought of them. Will the work of the high school grad specialists then just move to the high school counselors?
I, Superintendent, I mean, I I, Marnie, I can't comment on their.
Okay.
Work, you know, displacement, I imagine some of it will be absorbed. We talked about the elimination of grad specialists, where that work will be handled, probably pushed to our administrative staff.
Yeah, historically, your assistant principals, your principals, your counselors. You know, you you certainly can recall a time, Director Maraldo, when we didn't have grad specialists. But yeah, it's it's part of that work that's going to have to be dispersed, and I see Executive Director Hood walking up here to my right. She's going to either correct what I just said or, well, how'd they do?
You did great, I do think that counselors will take on some of that work, they had already partnered with grad specialists. I also think that administrators do carry some of that load as well, because they're watching student grad requirements and assisting in getting them to on-time graduation also. And deans, I think they have a role in that too, and any other members of our tier two teams that are really helping to monitor student progress through graduation. So I I think it will be a shared load, and certainly, you know, we're not thrilled to lose these valued staff in those roles. But there is, high schools had to give to.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Jake, I think, I'm trying to toggle between stuff. I think one of the things that you talked about was. As far as, let me find it again. As far as an increase in revenue, you indicated the increase in local levy withhold harmless, so did that pass? Because I think that's the one that's kind of.
It's still, it's still back and forth in currency, so we had a three million, a three point. Three million dollar increase just from year to year based on our lower levy and our our higher levy of fifty-four million. But we, as I said, we spread a million and a half over.
Because you have it as a four point four.
Yep, so I I'm assuming that that's going to happen.
I I, given the fact that there it's in concurrency, we we believe that it will happen, Director Maraldo. Unlike the budget right now where we were not willing, because they haven't come to to even close to any resolution in that. We do occasionally, you know, as we follow the legislative process, as bills get to a certain place, sometimes we start to feel more confident about them. Now, I will say, we did get, I'm getting a little nervous about this one, and CFO Cooper kind of alluded to this. The one thing that fears me is if they get into some kind of a, you know, a movable force on this. The bill could die. And we know that both sides support it because they both have have endorsed versions of it. It really came down to, should they hold us on our on our enrollment calculations for two years versus one year? And so we're the place right now, it's like, can you guys just agree on this one way or the other? Because we are kind of counting on that money, it's possible, I guess, that that bill would die. But it's also possible other bills could come through too.
It was the most risk, it was the riskiest portion of my presentation, I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
But it was about a million and a half only, so three million spread over two years, so. If it wasn't in the concurrency phase, Director Maraldo, I would not have included it in.
Okay.
But the four point four million is an increase over the comparison that you're making to last year or the year, this year or the year before?
So the increase I'm showing you is last fiscal year over fiscal year.
Remember, you had a normal bump up coming in your levy anyway.
So we moved from like forty-six or forty-seven up to fifty-four in authority.
Okay.
Remember, we calculate, when we did the levy.
Right.
We we intentionally kept the numbers lower in the first year than the second.
Right, okay, thank you, that's what I was.
And then, I had a question around, so essentially, we are looking to, but the the level of cuts that you're looking at is like, didn't you say sixteen point six million? Is that, I'm sorry?
Twenty-two million in total roughly teed up.
Okay. So I was just wondering, I noticed that, and I know this is going to sound disrespectful of teachers, but I'm trying to think. Saving teachers, is there any way, you have seven and a half million around increases? And I know that this wasn't, wouldn't just be increases for one set of staff, I would say increases across the organization. So would salary increases across the organization freezing them? So I'm, so I want to specify, it is not just one set of group, but doing a freeze of salaries for the year. Be a way to reduce the number of staff to lose their position and what's the challenges in doing that?
That is a potential option, so the seven and a half million referred to is negotiated increase, two percent of which is IPD or flow-through and three percent above. I did ask IEA today how they would feel about foregoing some of that increase, and they did not respond to my query.
Which which is understandable, I want to be clear that.
I put them on the spot, I mean, they couldn't really decide it right then, to be honest with you, but I did did ask the question. I have historically, I've had mixed results bargaining concessions over my career or wage givebacks. And that is why you will see, at least this CFO, go to elimination of positions instead of. The potential of savings if you try to claw back from labor agreements, this, you know, one reason. That you don't see like reductions of paper or we're going to turn the lights off more is that. Those those savings are tough to realize on a continual basis. And so that's why when we're eighty-five percent people, we reduce complete positions in FTE, because. Those savings are tangible and they're realized as soon as the contract is stopped.
Yeah, I had the same question that Director Maraldo had, though, I mean. If we don't engage in a conversation and give them the opportunity to say no. I mean, seven and a half million dollars is a significant impact to the overall twenty-two million. And to me, that, since we're talking dollars equals people, that represents a lot of people. So IEA should have the opportunity to self-determine. That chunk of where they cut.
Well, and I think, I think it even grows when you do it across the organization.
But and to that end, everybody potentially be given that opportunity to assist us in the recall effort, because we. We could approach each group and and ask them the question. Of course, they would have to be giving concessions back, which is, in my professional experience, highly unlikely.
But I I I, we asked the question because it's a logical question and I I. I would be shocked if somebody didn't ask it. The the fact of the matter is that the short answer is in that one, you know, the IPD is a flow-through, so your three percent, call it, let's say, five million dollars. Yeah, that would buy buy you back five million dollars worth of staff. That's exactly what it would do.
But what would it take to to bargain that concession? We're still trying to bargain getting our elementary kids back in full time, four days a week, if not five.
We're still bargaining about Echo Glen as well.
Right, so so we have stacked upon stacked upon stacked bargaining that needs to happen. And because all of that bargaining has taken so long throughout this entire year, I can't imagine. Interrupting that bargaining to try to bargain a reduction in a pay increase with the IEA when they've already told you, no, we're not really interested.
I I don't know if no, I'm not really interested would characterize what I, I wasn't there when the question was asked, but.
There was nervous laughter and very nervous laughter and and I did, you know, I did.
I mean, in fairness, I think.
I didn't tell them, I knew they couldn't decide then.
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to process this through their leadership structure within their organization, and it'd be true of any union. And it would have to be bargained, obviously.
It would, but we already have so much bargaining to do.
That's the concern.
And getting them back into school.
And I want to be clear, the people that are doing that bargaining are two of the people that have presented here tonight, and Mr. Cooper and Ms. Fowler. So that's a real, I I want to just be honest with the board, that's been a real challenge for us. The work of the school district keeps going forward. Everything that we need to do, reports that we have to submit to OSPI and all of the things that we do. On top of trying to negotiate all of these MOUs and everything, and the staff has done an amazing job. People in this building, that work around me, I can say from firsthand observation, have worked longer hours and more days than I've ever seen them work before. Since last, since March of twenty. And so sometimes what's practical and what's even feasible to accomplish between now and then. But here's what I will say on the record right now. Any labor group that would like to come and have a conversation with us about potentially a a wage freeze in order to save money? In order to save positions, because Jake said something that we probably should have said right at the beginning as a reminder, I forget that I'm not. I forget that I'm not always talking to people who live in the world of school systems the way we do. Eighty-five percent of what we do, and this is typical of almost any public school system you'll see, is people. So when we have to balance budgets, this idea that we could do it by not touching people, frankly, I've been through this process before. It's not realistic. And even within the fifteen percent that's not people, much of that is fixed cost. So when you get right down to it, you don't, outside of people, you don't have a lot of places to go in a school system if you've got to balance your budgets.
And there would be no concessions that would be agreed upon, uh, that it would just, should dissuade you from taking this action this evening. Cause they will, they will come, if they do come, they will come much later than we need it to help in our decision.
Well, I think that was Director Moore's point.
What it could aid, it could aid in
We welcome it.
We, it could bring back some positions that are on the production list if there's concessions. Um, but for now, uh, since there are none and the contracts are closed.
Again, this is a worst case scenario plan. And, and our worst case scenario is that none of these contracts will be renegotiated and we'll, we'll honor.
But I think to, I, what I think Director Moore was going, but maybe she wasn't, was that I don't want us to pause the negotiations. I'm returning to in-person learning to have a conversation about where, are you willing to do this?
Right. That's, that's my point.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't, thank you for that clarification, Director Gounder. Yeah, we have our priorities in terms of what's happening with bargaining. And right now that is not one of those priorities.
Thank you. That's
Right. That, that is what
Thank you for that clarification.
I agree, Director Moore.
Uh, Sydney. So we've moved into my third category now, which is what's, what are the items or how have we outlined how to, how to save money? This one? Okay. Um, and so my, my goal isn't to argue if one choice is better than the other. It's more about the prioritization as some of the unknowns come, uh, come to be known or if there's additional funds in the system. So what if anything could be done in, I guess, back to the value statement that Harlan was talking about to say, where, where do we think it's most important to either protect or reinstate first? How, how would that work?
How would it, um, how would it work, Sydney?
Yeah, I guess I'm asking because I know we've got this seniority thing that's happening. Like, is it, is it possible to say if the, a four million dollar amount materializes from one of the Senate bills? Like, which of these things is the most important to, to protect or reinstate first?
Right. Would you bring back mental health? Or would you bring back PBS? And is there a prioritization of all the things on the list?
We have talked internally, cabinet level about prioritization. Obviously the social, emotional and counseling positions. I can't speak to which one of those, like seven and a half FTE chunks would go first.
Well, I, I do want to, I, I think it's important to remind folks though too, that, um, in, or we, we do have PBS ES coaches too, who also address social, emotional issues with students. And, um, we didn't eliminate counselors. Our SEL curriculum will still be in place, but in classroom teachers. And kind of, I guess, Sydney, to your point, just so you can get inside my head a little bit, and I apologize because it can get kind of scary in here sometimes. When I think about how do we best address the needs of a student, I start in the classroom with the teacher. And, um, so that's, that's truly, and it, it all kind of emanates out from there. Cause I believe a really quality teacher and in, in it was a good curriculum. And in my estimation, an in-person modality of teaching and learning, um, that's where we get the biggest bang for our buck. Now, they are not miracle workers and they can't do it all themselves. And they need the support of a counselor to come in sometimes and help or a PBS ES coach or an instructional coach. And you'll note, we left our instruct, our elementary instructional coaches in place because we, I, and I think we should also make it clear. We talked to our, our building leaders too, as we built this list of the values and, and what, what works. And they don't all agree with the decisions we've made, but these were decisions that weren't just made in my office, um, without any consultation. But, so I do, I, I focus on the classroom first and then out from there. Now, as far as actually prioritizing this, this list, um, it's a difficult one because it kind of depends on, so how much money are we getting back and, and where would we get, where might we get the biggest bang for the buck? And so it, I, I know I could do it, Sydney. I'm not prepared to do it in this moment.
Right.
But I could sit down and, and then do I, do I want it to come equally to elementary, middle and high school? Or do we want to just front load it all into elementary if we get four or five million dollars back? Those are the types of conversations that we will absolutely hope that we get to have as the budgets get settled and we see that the revenue picture may in fact be better.
Or you use it to buffer your unanticipated enrollment declines. I mean, you have, you have other options too. You, you can actually alleviate some of Dr. Gounder and I's concerns too about enrollment. So if you get, if you get four million dollars, then you go, hmm, well, then I can put that in the bank. Um, or I know it's in revenue and I can, uh, have more flexibility if there is additional enrollment decline. So there are other, there are other ways.
So I'm laughing because you're, you're getting a sense of what happens in this building a lot between Mr. Cooper and myself. So if you got four million dollars, what would you do it? CFO says, well, I'd put it in the savings account because I'm darn nervous about how much of that we've spent down. And I'm like, well, I don't know if I'm ready to do that. You know, I may be ready to bring back some program too. So
In defense of your CFO though, three point one nine is scarily close to three percent. No, 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 let's be clear.
No, it's lower than that.
No, no, no. Yeah. He has his estimated fund balance at four percent and that's not the unrestricted, unreserved. That's the total. So there is almost no way, if this plays out, that you will make that three to seven percent on your unrestricted, unreserved.
That is correct, Director Moore.
So, so, and so this conversation is why I'm asking the question because similar to discussion with Director Meraldo on what will it, if we close, what will it take to reopen? I have the same concern, which is if we riff, what are the principles we're using to restore? And so I, for me, I think that's important to be, for us to have a, maybe a parameter or principle discussion around. Um, because it is important as we, as we hopefully look to restore and, and rebuild. And yes, there may be reasons why, you know, the first couple of millions would go to secure the fund balance. But I think for me, that is equally as important as the principles to restore as it is to make the decision on, on making the cut.
Well, I think we may, hopefully we have an opportunity to have that conversation shortly once legislature is done.
But will we? I mean, I guess that's what I'm feeling uncertain.
Right. It, it depends. I mean, if the legislature ends up doing things that provides us more revenue, we will be able to start to go through that. Some could be stashed away to try to help with the fund balance and some could then be used through a priority process to, to rebuild some of those programs all the while, while we're waiting for enrollment to come in. Because since we don't know what enrollment will be until the first day of school or the first month of school, it's also challenging to start necessarily bringing back everything if we don't know that we have the right number of students to match the staff we've kept.
Yeah.
Yes, but I guess I'm saying from the practical step of executing on this, is it would be in the discretion, will those decisions come back to this body for discussion? Or will it be an execution on, in, in the district and by, by cabinet? And that's where I'm saying I would, I feel less comfortable without having some parameters about rest, restoral. Right? I mean, because ultimately we're saying, we're giving you freedom to make a cut.
Right.
What I don't see is the commensurate and we have to talk to you about the approach to
Right. It's more of the means that they
Correct.
They work on, although usually we work very collaboratively.
Yeah. And you can tell me I don't get that. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. No, I mean, so for example, just, let me just cut to the chase here a little bit. If the board sets a parameter and says, you know, i- in the event that you're able to do this, we want you to restore mental health services as your top priority. Okay. That, that, that makes sense. I mean, I don't think we would probably be that far out of alignment. There are some things here, just, I, I mean, and again, I, I, I hate to have to talk about this because I recognize these represent people. But I talked a little bit about the PLC program. I love our PLC program. But in a time when I'm not going to be hiring a lot of new people, it doesn't, it's, it's just not as significant to me as the fact that I'm losing some mental health counselors.
Okay.
So there, yes, do I have a prioritization in my mind? I do, but I don't have it so refined that I could say, here's item one, here's item two. Now, if the board sets a parameter, just like you do your budget parameters, um, I, I have no, I have no issue with that. And I think that that is appropriate within our governance structure.
In fact, we'd love to bring you kind of a springboard back if we have the opportunity. I mean, that would be
Absolutely.
For, for me, that would be, so in the, in the categories of things I, I care about, that would be, um, that and us getting to a statement around fall and what fall looks like and as well as, and I understand we don't have to get to the nits and nats of the prioritization, but I think there are some, there are some big swings in here of things that it would be better to know how we think about, um, fund balance enhancement versus restoral of programs. And at what point, and what of those programs do we consider to be more, more priorities than, than other? Not to get into the shorts of all the, the details. Those are the two for me that I would love to get, um, to get us rallied around as we do this.
And I think a retreat or a work study are always great places to
I was just thinking the retreat might be a good place for that conversation.
But I think the takeaway of a desire for a recall slash restoration parameters established by the board. I mean, again, Jake referenced that you make budget parameters every year. Makes sense. To be clear, we've never done restoration, uh, parameters because we've just never really had to do it.
Well, we, we didn't do it and we did have a need to do it last time. We didn't talk about it. So the district just went ahead and we prodded along, right? We didn't think through how we were going to restore. I think partly because I, it was not this deep of a cut if I recall.
And remember too, Director Meraldo, we, a lot of this came as a result of the McCleary money. Most of this stuff didn't exist in two thousand and ten.
Right.
So we were really, what we were left with then was class size.
Right.
And if you recall, we increased class size.
And the Great Recession.
Then you bring it back down when you can. This is more complicated than that. You're absolutely right.
Forty-eight month slog during the recession. Remember it was, it was a little bit of reduction each year for
Yeah. And I'm so, I apologize. I kind of cut you off.
Well, because my other thought around that is there's a lot more to consider that is not in here. And a lot of it has to do with recovery. So we're, this, whatever our recovery process is, I think putting down parameters is going to be important because it's going to be a multi-year process. And it's going to include how, we might have to say that, well, high school grad specialists are going to be our number one because during the pandemic, our kids are getting twice as many Fs as they were before. And so we are, we might have the best graduation rates now, two years from now, they might look like other districts that we wouldn't even associate with, comparing ourselves with. So we don't know what recovery is going to look like and where that money is really going to need to go to get to where we need, need to be.
It's a good point. And I, I do agree. I think this is going to play out. I mean, we're fourteen months into this pandemic now and we're getting the first big economic shocks to our system. Um, I, I will, I, I shared this with Diane over break, you know, as, as life is returning in our building is now open to the public. I've had, you know, I've kind of gone back to my old ways. I'm wearing a suit to work and stuff more often. Went to a dry cleaners, my dry cleaners that's been there for twenty-one years. And I walked up to the door and the door was locked. And then it just hit me, that's right. I haven't been going to the dry cleaners. I'm a classic dry cleaner customer. They're closed. They've shut down. Their business is gone. And I, it just hit me in a way that there's this residual effect of what's happening here. And a lot of it is really starting to hit us now. We've been coasting along and people have been getting their paychecks and everything and, um, but, but as one of the members of the public said tonight in, in her, in her input, that, that can't continue that way. I mean, we don't print money here in the Issaquah School District. If somebody had said to me, Ron, you're going to spend thirty million dollars out of the fund balance in the next couple of years? I would have thought they had lost their mind. But yet that's, I'm bringing you that.
So I, just one final thing, and I know I probably want to just take the question. I think, I, some of my thoughts is that throughout this pandemic, we have divided ourselves. I, there are so many different camps that have divided and angered and hurt. And this is the hardest part is because nobody wins in this situation with a rift. And it is the last, most hurtful thing that we have done by far. And it doesn't feel good. And I don't know, I, I struggle with that because we saw this coming. Like many of the people said, in September, I was talking about this. It has been the piece that has been, been behind my push to get us back in the classroom. And so many of those teachers, I've seen it online. I've read your comments saying we don't care. And I got to tell you, that has upset me more than anything else is when teachers like, they just don't care. You can say it's a lack of leadership. We've tried. I don't know what more this board could have done. I really don't. In talking with other boards, Harlan and I meet every Friday morning with a group of board of directors, a group of board members. And I don't know anyone that, of them even, and I respect their work. I don't know that any of them are pushing as hard as Harlan and I have been. And so to have people say, we don't care, that has been a lack of leadership. I, we have done all this pushing and I know you can go back to the September discussions when we talked about not coming back, that this was exactly what I talked about. And so it's really frustrating to me. So I'm thinking, what can we do to come together? And there is an area where we can all be coming together. Every single one of us, everybody that is listening right now can send an email to your senator, your state senator. You can even send one to Senator Patty Murray, who is the chair of the Senate Help Committee, which is, includes education. So because it was that decision that gave us six million dollars and Highline down the road, seventy-six million dollars. I want, I hope people are listening. Six million dollars coming to, for COVID release, relief for Issaquah and seventy-six million down the road. And what the Senator's aide said is, well, we designated a certain amount of money to go to the state to fix this, to fix the inequities. And what is our state deciding to do? Not fix it. Going back to that same inequity model and doing it again. So rather than the state coming through and making sure that we districts, so we're getting what, three hundred and thirty-one dollars per student? And there are school districts out there getting over five thousand. So our state senator, Lisa Wellman in the forty-first, who chairs the education committee, is saying, we want to make sure that districts are getting at least fifteen hundred dollars per student for COVID release and relief. And that's what that additional money from the federal government, that that pocket of, I think it's like a hundred and twenty million, maybe it's a hundred and fifty million, something like that, that it will be spread out to make that happen. And she's getting resistance from the House side. So email your House representative, email your Senate, state senator. Cause at least getting fifteen hundred dollars per student, rather than three hundred for COVID relief and recovery will go a long way to helping us out. A long, I think it's like twelve million?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, sorry, twenty-two million. Wait, how much?
No, no, if we got
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred.
Yeah, it's about twenty, twenty-one million. Depends on the enrollment count, yearly use for count.
So we can come together by doing that.
And it would eliminate a lot of these cuts.
And, and, and just to be clear, I, I've never heard anybody on my staff or on this board begrudge the money that other districts get. I mean, that's, we're not saying, you know, and the Senate plan doesn't take money away from them. And, and you're right, it is an extraordinary amount of money in some cases, but they have some extraordinary issues as well. So again, I, this is not about, I, I don't begrudge any district that is, has higher poverty rates and other problems from getting what they need. I'm just saying, we have needs here as well. We have sixteen hundred free and reduced lunch students. Um, I have more free and reduced lunch students than a lot of small districts that are very, have a high poverty rate. But for some reason, it, it, it feels to me, and this is, I'm only speaking for myself here, that it's another case of, oh, you out there in, in East King County, you don't need anything. You've got this covered. You've got fund balances. Well, yeah, I do for a few more months.
We did.
Yeah, or did, yeah. So it's just, it's been frustrating to us that, you know, again, I'm not begr Yeah, or did, yeah, so it's just, it's been frustrating to us that, you know, again, I'm not begrudging. The seventy million dollars that goes to a, a similar sized district. But I am, I, I do think that you talk about equity. I, I, I think the fact that, you know, we get, you know, one tenth of that is very frustrating. Our students need that kind of support too, so, so what's happening? I'm proposing that we take counselors away from kids in the Issaquah School District. I wouldn't be doing that if I had. If, what if I had five thousand dollars per student? Who knows what we'd be doing?
That'd be a hundred million.
So, I don't know, it's frustrating, but thank you because I do think people need to get engaged in this and the conversations. Are happening right now as we speak down in Olympia, the clock is ticking on this. The federal thing, that, that ship seems to have sailed, if that's going to get fixed, it needs to get fixed at our state level. And I appreciate the work of Senator Wellman and, and, and on the Senate side and. You know, I'm, I'm frustrated by the lack of support for districts like ours on the House budget.
Okay, unless there's further conversation, I think we have a motion on the table, Harlan, were you about to say something?
I was just gonna say, you know, I think part of it is, is that when you look at the House Appropriations Committee, there's Tana Sen and then there's no one else. That is in East King County that represents us or understands, and so I think that's part of the problem. Is when we look at where they're all located at Seattle and South King County, so we're feeling like it's fine. And their boards and districts aren't having this conversation that we're having about what bad decision do we have to make tonight? And so they're not going to hear this from their constituents about this being a problem.
That's right.
Hundred percent correct.
I, 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 I mean. I almost, as I listen to Dr. Gallagher. I'm going to be out there potentially riffing teachers. And there's going to be districts not that far from mine that are going to be so flush with money, they're going to be, I, I don't even know what they're going to do with some of it. Maybe I'm not going to get my teachers back. They're going to have other opportunities. Now, there's also districts like ours that are in the process of riffing, so it's a going to be, it's going to be a tough market. And I happen to believe that money is not the only reason people work where they, or work where they choose to work. And I've heard for years and years, and I even heard it tonight from public input from a teacher from a neighboring district, that she always wanted to work here. So I, I do think that there has been a value add and a, and a reason and a draw for people to want to come and work here, but. You know, if I have to continue to execute riffs and things like that, that's going to certainly kill that reputation.
Okay, are we ready to vote? So we have a motion on the table to approve the. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two program service reductions as presented by the administration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I got four ayes and one nay, so the motion passes.
Thank you.
That was really difficult.
Thank you, I'm sorry that you had to do that and I'm sorry that our system has to go through that. But we appreciate your efforts then.
Okay, we have one more agenda item, oh, there it is. Uh, which regarding Resolution eleven sixty-one, which is a, also a reduction in force. And I would start the conversation with a motion and. I move the board adopt Resolution one one six one, authorizing the superintendent to implement a reduction in force as presented. Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded and I'm not sure why the agenda is up there, maybe we could put the resolution up there.
And this is a resolution to hopefully. Alleviate some of the concerns that Dr. Gallagher expressed and I, I feel as well. This would allow the superintendent to bring to you anytime throughout fiscal, the next fiscal year, any classified reductions that may be needed so we can act upon them immediately. It is very similar, just a shorter version of the resolution you passed on August of this last year, or the twenty twenty.
Jake referred to this as our belts and suspenders. Because we just had a lengthy conversation about, well, what if you didn't, what if, what if you get a bigger shock to the system? And as you all know, once we make a decision after May fifteenth on our certificated staff, that's it, we, we can't make that decision again. On the classified side, we can, as we did this past year, we can do mid-year reductions if need to. It's certainly, as we said, we don't think there's much. There's not much meat left on that classified bone, especially given all the demands that we may have on those services. However, if we got to a place, this would just give us the opportunity to, to do the work that we've previously done. To, to meet our financial obligations. That's why we brought it forward tonight, there's no, there's nothing that's pending right now on the classified side, other than what you saw in the budget document. This is more of a, of, of a safety net, I guess.
And we, we will have some movement on classified side, given our change in enrollment and boundaries. Most likely an excess situation, which you heard Director Fowler talked about, but there could be a play, a situation where we don't have a position for that person. And so that is why this resolution is brought forward. So legally speaking, you've already made, under state law, you've made the decision by your action. On the program reductions to be able to make all those reductions, this is another ancillary, as I said, belt and suspenders. Just to put you on the right legal footing to allow us to execute reductions of forces needed throughout the fiscal year.
Okay, and is there any conversation, question, comments from the board? I am seeing none. Okay, so. I will call the question to adopt Resolution eleven sixty-one, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion passes. And that's it.
Yeah, thank you again, sorry again that we have to go through this exercise, I, I sincerely hope. And we will bring a resolution, a draft resolution for the board's consideration for the next meeting. Related to recall restoration parameters. And I, I certainly hope that we get to use those and then we will also appreciate the conversation too around. A statement from the board and a board resolution on. I, 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 in my note, I refer to it as the Fall Teaching and Learning Modality Plan for five-day-a-week full-time programming. In-person program. So I think that, that was very helpful for us to be able to have this conversation.
That is essential as we rebuild.
We, we are, and I just have to say, and, and really since late January, I've so much appreciated the collaboration between. The board, myself and my team, this has been really hard and I, I appreciate your comments, Director Maraldo, about caring. Because you demonstrate, you're here tonight doing this work. That's a demonstration of how much you care about this school system, this community and our students. So I, I, I'm going to take some offense to anybody who says you all, or I, or my staff don't care. Because we care deeply, that's why we're here. Yeah, I agree, you can criticize my leadership, if you, you can call it a failure of leadership, that, you know, that's, I'll, I'll, I'll bring those criticisms on. But as far as caring, no, that, that's not a fair place to go. You've all, I've watched you all put tremendous time and it isn't just the time, it's not like this, it's not, this isn't, hasn't been enjoyable. So thank you for what you do for our community and for our students, I know you care deeply. And I think you demonstrate that all the time, so.